I'd like to welcome everyone to the February 22, 2024, meeting of the Tiverton Zoning Board of Review. We're here on a special meeting on the Colbea matter that has been before this board on December 6, January 22, and tonight, so this will be our third meeting. Before we dive into everything, I'd like to just introduce everyone who's up here and explain what their functions are. Starting from my far right is Tara Ferreira. She's our board stenographer. Sitting next to her is Jay Jackson, who's a full voting member. Sitting next to him is Dave Collins, who's our vice chair. My name is Lisi Gishite, and I'm the chair. To my left is Michael. Did I miss somebody? Oh, Jen, I didn't see you. You were sitting back. The blonde is Jennifer Hilton-Cavanaugh, who's a full member. Forgive me. Michael Marcello is to my left. George Alzaback is to his left. He's a full voting member. Ed Schober is our alternate, and John Oul is our building and zoning official. So we are heading into our third round, and for the record, this is a petition that's been filed by James Hall, general counsel, 695 George Washington Highway Lincoln, for a special use permit at Zira Souza Road, plot 119, lot 624. The property is located in a general commercial zoning and pedestrian-friendly destination zoning district, seeking to build a new Seasons Corner Market that will consist of a convenience store with drive-through coffee shop and a gasoline filling station with four fueling pumps covered by a canopy. They're looking for approval of three special use permits. The first one is for a gas filling station pursuant to Article 4, Section 10J of our zoning ordinance. Two, a special use permit for a restaurant and drive-through service pursuant to Article 4, Section 8E of the zoning ordinance. And three, a special use permit for signage pursuant to Article 12, Section 11 of the ordinance. And I forgot to introduce our stenographer de jour, who is Barbara Montijo, and she's sitting in front, taking everything down. So I know when we broke last month, there were some matters that both the board and the public wished Mr. Stolzmann to find answers to and to comment on. And so I think before it's agreeable to council, before you resume your cross-examination, we'll tie up the loose ends from last month's hearing.
Michelle, if you can, we brought some supplemental slides to answer some of the questions and provide some of the materials that were required. We brought some supplemental slides.
Have you provided copies to council?
We have not yet. We will submit those. They were literally being generated over the last several days. The data took some more time. And we're happy, of course, if there are any questions on those after this hearing, anybody who prepared those or testifies as to them.
Okay, that's fine. As long as everybody has an opportunity to
Yes.
... review and prepare for cross-examinations of whoever you're going to put on.
Thank you. So there were six topics of questions that arose, and the first one had to do with site design and landscaping. So what we did is we went back and measured the distances. There was a question as to the lot coverage and area. So this is the same site plan you've been seeing, but we amended it slightly to address some of the landscaping access and site coverage questions that arose.
Can we put a label on that so we know we can differentiate it from?
Sure. We can, and we can call it, we can date it today.
Okay, why don't we do that?
It's the February 22, 2024 site plan.
We're going to call it the supplemental exhibit one.
That's fine, too. However, that makes sense, yeah. So let me walk you through, and I brought a laser pointer this time, so I won't, I don't have to walk up there and point with my finger. Starting in the south, if you can see my little laser pointer there, we put a curved, elevated, four-inch elevated median in the center, not the stamped concrete that was miscommunicated last time. And then going to the east, what we did is we moved the trash bin that was in this corner, and we moved that up to the northeast corner. That gave us the opportunity to do two things. One, by moving the trash bin from the southeast to the northeast corner, it allowed us to increase the landscape area in the southeast area. We'll show you a landscape plan next. And then we also moved the loading dock area that was in front of some parking spaces here. We moved that north, so we have the dumpster with the loading area now right behind the dumpster, or right in front of the dumpster, I should say. And then we moved the parking spaces that were here to the south. What that also did is that opened up a few feet of area directly to the south of the building, and then in addition to that, we moved the building slightly to the north. That will require some additional retaining wall on the north side. The red lines here represent where the building was before, and the shaded area is the current proposal. So it just moves the building five, seven feet north, maybe nine feet at most, north. And what that does, then, the combination of moving the dumpster and moving the building, shifting the building a little bit, it creates the ability to put a full bypass lane around the perimeter. You may recall the prior plan had one lane here on the south. So now we have a dedicated lane adjacent to the building and a full bypass lane that goes around the perimeter. So additionally, this plan also shows the distances. I believe it might have been Ms. Hilton-Cavanaugh who asked the question about the buffer zone widths. So the buffer zones all the way around are at a minimum of 20 feet, quite a thick buffer, especially along Souza Road. They range from 50, 75 feet down to a low 20, 21 feet of depth. So there's quite a substantial depth. We'll show on the landscape plan next, but not the second. The total site, you may remember, is an acre and a half, 1.52 acres. Forty-two percent of the whole site is landscaped, so 58% roughly is developed. It's nearly 50% of the site is open space, and we'll get into some more details on that. In fact, why don't we go to the landscape plan, unless there are any questions from the board on this?
I have a question. I have a concern with that movement of the building now, because originally, your coffee drive-through, my main concern was originally dividing that road and also not allowing people to queue up Souza Road.
Yes.
But you move in that building, you're really allowing the people to actually queue up Souza Road, because now you give them full-turn car to go down the service window, and I do have a problem with that.
So, okay, so the menu board is here.
Right.
And the pickup is here. So the thought was, and we can explore that further with our traffic engineer, but the thought was to, so that you don't get queuing and jam here and out, is create enough flow to get through.
But the radius you have right now kind of allows someone to come right off Souza Road and just go right into the drive-through. And if you, when you had it before, was it simply, it would have been more difficult for them to make a turn into your drive-through. Now you're literally telling them, yeah, come down Souza Road, and Souza Road should not be part of your.
Yeah, no, and that's not, so we're happy to, so that we, I understand that. We hadn't thought that, and frankly, that hasn't been part of this design discussion.
That's what we hear.
So if I may suggest, that might be, let's see if there's a way to design, you know, a no right turn there, or some type of barrier, or some type of design that prohibits that right turn. It's not our intent
I understand, but I just
To make that, our intent was to make it
Brings out that concern for me.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Let's try to talk at the same time.
I'm sorry.
The stenographer's trying to take it down.
I apologize. That's my fault. So with that feedback, we'll address that issue. As a practical matter, as Mr. Chevlin will testify to later, the volume of drive-through here is pretty minimal. We only, as a reminder, this building is 3,600 square feet, of which only 400 square feet are dedicated to the food service component. And we have actual comparable data that we'll share with you. We don't get big queues here. This isn't a dedicated doughnut store, and we're stipulating this is not going to be converted to a full takeout restaurant. The café component, again, is just about 10% of the food preparation, is the food preparation area. So, but we don't have any problem. Let's explore the right turn in. That's not the intent.
Okay.
If you can go to the landscape plan. So
Why don't we label this supplemental exhibit two? This is a different one than
Yes, this is, this is a landscape plan, and this is slightly different from our prior landscape plan, because we've been able to elaborate on the perimeter landscaping now that we've been able to create a little bit more area. So this shows, and we'll have some renderings that we've matched to these. One of the other requests was, can we look at renderings and see what it would look like? So we've matched renderings to these planting schemes. But again, the notion was to create substantial buffers along Souza Road, and we've done that with deciduous trees, as well as shrubs and berms and substantial plantings.
Could you give me those distances just for the record? What are those?
Yeah, the width
As you go around, yeah.
These distances are the same as the plan that you have. Cheryl, can you, let me turn your microphone.
No problem. Can you hear me? Sorry, my voice is a little hoarse. Starting on the left-hand side, from our property line to the drive aisle is about 47 feet. Moving to the right, there's a curve here, so it's about 28.3, 22.3 to edge of curb, and then to the back of the sidewalk, it's about 16 feet. And then as you move to the right, it opens up 21.8, and then 41.5 where the dumpster location was previously.
I have a question. I had asked that last time, and I thought it would be addressed, especially when you changed everything. A sidewalk coming down Souza Road, you certainly have plenty of room. If this has become a reality, people, we've got a lot of houses coming up, you know, on Fish Road, and people might be walking down or whatever. It seems like it should be a sidewalk on that side, too. You have addressed the sidewalk toward Main Road, and you addressed it all the way into your property. I feel like you're asking people to walk, you know, also unsafe on smaller roads, Souza Road, and people who live around there, they have to deal with that. So I feel like sidewalks are necessary.
Well, yeah. So we did, that was my next, perfect, our next point. We didn't put it on the plan. We are, we're able to, for some reason, it doesn't sound like it's on. It's okay. There is an opportunity to put sidewalk either from Main to the road or all the way to the end of the site. There's no problem doing that. It would require some design, and frankly, what happens to do that because of the topography, we'd have to work with your public works department and get an easement into the right-of-way. It wouldn't require narrowing the road at all. It would be a typical sidewalk in the municipal right-of-way. The answer to that is yes. If the town wants us to design and work with your public works department, it is over the existing, I can't remember whether it's a sewer or water easement. So there's some infrastructure discussion. So the answer is yes, we're able to do it. Our thought was, at this time, the planning consultants actually tell us that until the other development happens, you don't want the sidewalk there. But if the town wants us to put a sidewalk, and we're able to do that, I don't. We played with some discussion, designed that, but it's just, it's hard to do that in a conceptual manner. But the sidewalk would run, we could keep the sidewalk, or we could run it just down along there. There's room within the right-of-way, and there is actually sufficient elevation at just at the edge of our property line. There's some real pitch to the property line, though. So the answer to that is yes.
I also have one more question I asked for last time. I could see, I don't have a pointer, at the entrance on Main Road, you have such a bump out in the greenery, whatever you want to call it.
Yeah.
And I am concerned with your delivery trucks. Main Road is tight, they come around the corner. Your, day before a storm, we know how pumps could get busy and gas need to be delivered. I would like feel this need to be place for your truck to pull in weight on your property, not on Main Road. And for you to, without even adding your entrance space, I need your space to be available for truck to, like, I don't want to drive down Main Road to find your truck waiting to come in. A 30,000-gallon delivery, that could be two trucks.
That was raised last time. We will continue to work on that. The typical way this happens is there's, and it may differ for different types of stores, but the way Colbea does it is there's a call to this manager and a clearing done. And we don't have, we don't, the client assures me we don't have waitings, and then occasionally, if there's a miscommunication, person will come back or circle around and come back later. There's, but, and we would, we could certainly not have a truck wait on the road, but I think we also, we'll talk with our traffic and our site planning folks more, because I think we thought we had room on this pad as well for a waiting area. So we'll continue to work on that.
Okay.
I'm sorry? Yeah.
So I remember that conversation, and my question is, are you referring to when a truck pulls in here, you would like an area to idle in this area?
The problem is, if you put it in your driveway, the truck is now, you know, blocking your entrance to the station. Now the drivers are people waiting for your truck to move. It's easy to think everybody knows what the truck are doing.
Sure.
I've been doing it for a long time. People don't know what to do when they see a truck. They can't even let them get into the place. They don't know what to do. They don't know what they're doing. So it's easy for us to think, oh, when the truck pulls in and parks right there, everybody knows to go around them. That's not how it works. What I'm saying to you is, you've got a lot of berm, that whole opening, it should be like taken down a little bit. I'm not saying that's what you should do, but it should be taken down a little bit, and your drivers know to never wait in the roadway or in Main Road. This is good and dandy if we have no weather, but three days before a snowstorm, you cannot get near any pumps. We struggle to get delivery in. We struggle to line up drivers. Where you are, and I'm a full service, when you're self-service, no one will, all due respect, no manager coming out in the call to tell drivers, move off the pump or move off the road. You need to find a place where you take your driver off the road to park in your property without blocking the driveway.
Okay, so you're
We're going to respond to that. Let's, I understand the issue. We've got a backup and queuing potential issue
Thank you.
Because of site, and we'll continue to work on that. Then, the next set of questions had to do, while we're talking about visual and impact and operations, were renderings. We asked, we had five views of renderings, two from Main Road as you approach, one from directly across, one from the intersection from Schooner, and then two on Souza Road. So this is heading south on Main Road to the left. And this is based on the site plan and to the best you can do in the amount of time that we had, accurate in terms of curbing, et cetera. There's still some tweaks to this that would be better, but you'll see as we come up. But we tried to at least get all the current conditions correct and places, and we reflect the landscaping at, you know, semi-mature landscaping. So this coming south, this is the sign that we're requesting, the monument sign. Remember, you'll see this sign is conforming with the exception of it's in the setback a little bit, because if you, the way the setback works, it would have to be pretty far off the road. So that's the sign. This is the canopy from the road, and that's the store behind the canopy. And this would be Schooner on the right and Souza on the left. That's from directly across the street, from the, near the entrance to the driveway right across the street. This is the least shielded area, because it's the main entrance. This is the apron around the retention area, the signage perpendicular Souza Road, and our landscaping there in the back, and some existing landscaping and fencing across the This is from Schooner, heading east. As you turn in, the sign, the main entrance, some of the larger trees and shrubberies along the bottom. And that's, again, that's consistent with the landscape plan we just showed you. This is from, forgetting the name, this is from the Hayward Home. Directly across is the side of the store, the canopy, the back, again, reflecting the site plan conditions, and the current site conditions generally. And this is Souza. It's a little striped more than it is now, but that's about the approximate width, and it shows, this is side slat fencing, not vertical slat fencing, but again, given our time constraints from a few weeks ago, and wanting to make sure that at least the geometry was correct, this is the rendering from that position. This is very hard to read. We'll submit this immediately after the hearing, but what we tried to do, given that your ordinance is, your sign ordinance is broken into different sections, we tried to give you a summary of signage relief requested and what we're asking for, and then what we've slightly changed since the last hearing. What we have done since the last hearing is went through the, you may recall, we got rid of almost all the illuminated lighting. And then I went back, and we also went through our Shell franchisee requirements for minimum signage, and we tried to eliminate any additional signs that we were asking for. So we were able to eliminate two more signs that were small, but nonetheless, you know, we understand we're trying to ask for the minimum. Without this relief, and as we've discussed briefly before, and we'll elaborate here, without the signage, we're prohibited from using the Shell franchise. So, and that's really with two, that's these Shell pectins, the Shell brand, the pectin being a scallop shell, so the Shell shell. There's two of those, one on the front and one on the side of the canopy, and those have to be internally illuminated. Again, those are three feet by three feet, and they're up on the canopy, and those are the only illuminated manufactured signs we're asking for, other than the LED pricing signage and signage for the menu board.
I have a question. We, can I ask? I have brought to your attention, and actually, one of the audience also brought one to your attention, that I, you're stationed in Middletown, you're stationed in Bristol. If you drive all over the Cape, there's certain ways, when you come to a smaller town, things has to be adjusted with respect to Shell or not. I do have a problem with the canopy being 3Ds, to simplify it, lit up with the yellow and red stripes. You come into a small town, this is not a city, I think everybody knows there's a gas station coming. Everybody knows around the corner, there's a monument sign, so it's Shell. Everybody's going to see the oyster or the shell on the canopy. You were willing to open gas stations somewhere else in other towns without these canopies being lit up like Christmas tree, but somehow, we're not backing off that a little bit here. Can you tell me why?
Yeah, so, but we're going to, I'm going to show you a massing diagram of Middletown and Bristol at a couple slides from now. And those are older stores. Those stores were grandfathered in with the Shell licensing. That's just, so that's the problem we have. It's not, there's a consistency required now, and they go through sign changes, and that's the requirement for a new station.
I do have, I actually don't believe that, but beside that, with all respect, you, a lot of towns in New England will not allow lit canopy. Okay? Tiverton, up until five years ago, you had no shot of putting light up canopies. So yes, the Shell could require it, Sunoco could require it, SIT could require it, it doesn't exist. I had a mobile in town and was not allowed. Things changed, and you have to go for whatever the town will allow you. So I'm sorry, it's just, the company could require it, but you'll have to obey what, really, your neighbors, your town, where you're going, where you're opening. You have to take that into consideration.
All right, well, we understand that. Let me, let's see if we can adjust that further. I don't know if there are waivers available, et cetera.
There is.
But what we did, this exercise from the last meeting, was an attempt to give the minimum required to operate
I appreciate it.
The business.
Thank you.
And in the normal fashion. As always, you pretty clearly say what you prefer, so we're going to try to respond to that.
Thank you.
First now.
Well, we're a taxpayer as well. We own the property, and so we just want the opportunity to take, to utilize the property as it's owned. The, you'll see, we took out the internal illumination on the Seasons sign and the Corner Market sign, and we'll submit this, you can all review that, and opposing counsel, and your experts can review that in detail as well, and we'll make ourselves available for any further discussion on that. But we just tried to respond to the notion of, could we articulate in one piece of paper how this works? And it was, it's not easy to do, but we played with it quite a bit, spent a lot of time trying to come up with a way, like a chart, a zoning chart, that would demonstrate this. We also took off any extraneous awning labels and anything that could be deemed a sign that, you know, might look okay, but we're just trying to minimize it. We know that the signage is important, even if it's in the, like, the pickup, in the awning in the back that nobody can see. We took off labels. And why don't we go to that slide next? This is what our current signage program looks like. So this is the canopy, and I just want, just to remind you, this is backlit, the Shell pectin is backlit, but these lights, these are not backlit. These are lit just from the halo lighting above it, but that's just the color of the banner.
I'm sorry, one more time, what did you just say? They're not backlit?
They're not backlit. There's a light above them that lights them.
Yeah, but they light up.
They're lit. They are lit.
They're not 3D, they're backlit. They're not internally lit, they are lit. If you live across the street, they are lit.
Yes, they are lit.
Thank you.
I'm not, I just want to make it clear, they're not internally lit. They're not clear plastic with lighting behind them.
They're lit.
They are lit.
Please.
No, they're lit.
Thank you.
We're not, but we're not asking for relief
No, no, I understand. I'm just saying they're lit. You can say however you want to say it.
Yep. This, again, is the sign. The sign is all within compliance size, height, and it's just, it crosses over the setback line, and there is a stone monument base for that, that would be required, we would believe would be required with the, if you should approve it. Can you just go down the slide a little bit more?
On that monument sign, is that, that monument sign, the relief that's requested is because it's in the setback? Other than that, all, it's compliant?
That's correct.
It's a dimensional relief you were requesting
Yeah, I put it on.
That would be a dimensional relief because it's in the setback? Oh, special use permit. Not a dimensional relief.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
The base does bring it up a little bit higher.
Okay.
So we're asking for height for the base, not for the sign.
Height, okay.
And we'll review that again as well, but that's, and then, and then the setback.
I just want to understand what was requested.
Yep, thank you. That's.
I'm sorry, I just want to understand what was requested.
And as you can see here, this shows that we're out on the setback a little bit rather than here in the retention area. We go to the, right at the property line. Then our next slide. There was a question about the illumination. You can shrink that down just a little bit, just, so this, you may recall when we first showed this slide, the colors didn't show up very well and they still don't, they aren't perfect, but this darker area is all within the property line. This is all lighting, signage lighting, safety lighting, everything. And the orange area or the darker rust-colored area is where there is direct lighting, direct lighting. The yellow area, and this is Souza Road here, is where there's some illumination goes, spills into the street. And you can't read, when you get the hard copy, everybody can look at it with a magnifying glass. Each of these little dots is a foot candle number. And that's the way to measure illumination by foot candles. And it's, it goes down to point one, point two, point one here near the entrance, because this is, this entrance on Souza Road has some lighting and the same here. When you get to the perimeter and get down here, this entire Souza Road is, are all zeros, point zeros. So again, if you hold up a piece of paper at that point in the street, it will not, it will show no illumination. Now you can see it. There's no doubt you can see it. You can see a light half a mile away if it's a flashlight. So, but there was a discussion about like comparing it to staring into light. Well, my hand is lit by these lights. These lights are intended to illuminate this podium. So what we've done is we've had all the lights directed in, we do this regularly to try to eliminate illumination. Now, in addition to that, there are things that are lit and you can see them. And we're trying to, we're gonna, we're gonna make a continuing effort to try to reduce the visual impact by lighting. Now, one of the things I just point out here is this is without landscaping. So there is lighting buffering with the landscaping and we've not done that overlay yet. We just haven't had time yet to do that. But that's, you know, we're continuing to work on that.
I have a question. This is from a couple slides, but you just mentioned, and I meant to ask you that, but we moved on. Are you planting mature trees? I mean, you had those big trees.
They will be substantial trees at plantings, not little seedlings, but we did not, the renderings are not at planting stage. There will be some growth. We didn't do it at full, you know, full age.
Just in the rendering, it shows these mature trees.
Yeah, because, we, we.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, yes, yes. He said they showed us full trees, Mr. Albezak said that. And I said, we asked our illustrators to draw some reasonable medium to, because when you, the day you plant them, they look small, they'll start to grow. The shrubberies will look, will grow and be trimmed. So that was the medium. Now the next slide. I can't read this. Shows this Middletown? I'm sorry, Bristol? So in Bristol, the red is our site. And in Bristol, and we overlaid our site onto Bristol. And what this shows, just by, now, these aren't architectural comparisons, but they are site comparisons. In Bristol, the site, the site is roughly eight tenths of an acre, Bristol, Rhode Island.
Is it Medicon Avenue in Bristol?
Yes. The question was if it's on Medicon Avenue in Bristol? And I replied, yes. Thank you.
Bring that to you.
So this site is eight tenths of an acre. And remember, our site's 1.52 acres. So, and this site has a store, the four pumps, and the drive-through. So it is comparable, but the notion that we're trying to cram, I mean, our position is, is this is a reasonable allocation of site utilization at Main Road and Souza Road. In Bristol, it's roughly the same amount of development on a site that's half as large. And this has only a little bit of open space and landscaping at the south and a little bit at the upper side. I don't know the directional error on this.
I have a question. But wasn't Bristol pre-existing before you turned into a season?
I believe so.
It was?
Yes. Yeah, I believe so.
So?
No?
Wasn't a gas station before?
It was.
It was a gas station before?
But the point, yes, let's assume it was for purposes. Even if, I don't know the answer to that, sure, and I wouldn't want to guess in answering you. We'll find the exact answer out. But if it was, and let's assume it was, our point is, I think the point is, is in developing a new store on a new site, what's the appropriate land utilization for such a site? And we really do, we think, we think that in an acre and a half site, using a 3,000 square, 600 square foot store with the four pump canopy and the drive-through, with the bypass lane and the three entrances, two on Main Road, one split on Souza, creates adequate and safe utilization of the site without overcrowding it, particularly with the substantial landscape buffer on the perimeter. That's the point we're trying to make here. Let's go to Middletown, the last slide that we have. And this one is a similar, a similar situation. In Middletown, it's 0.83 acres, so it's almost the same size as Bristol. And this has a little bit smaller building. This building, in fairness, is under 3,000 square feet, a little bit under.
But you do have the same problem, pre-existing non-conformity, that station was there way before.
Yes, yeah. No, no, and I suppose, one of the things we did, I didn't want to, but we can do this and I'll submit that before the next hearing. We can show a comparison of site utilization on, a small town site utilization on new sites. We'll do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, to show that we're, that we're consistent with our development. We just, we, I think you'll find that we are being both consistent, maybe even more generous with open space here. Generous, I know that people are gonna snicker at that, but that's the intent.
I'm not picking, I'm just saying you laid out over a pre-existing non-conformity.
Okay, so let's, we'll make some additional site comparisons and submit those prior to the next hearing. So the questions on layout, landscaping, renderings, try to clarify the sign change, the foot candle, clarifying the foot candle, the illumination perimeter, and the density comparisons to Middletown and Bristol. And we also looked at the architectural comparisons, as Mr. Alzabek had talked about, and we're gonna revisit that, but we couldn't make some of those changes. Bear in mind that we do have, and we have put the shingled, the shingled manser, I'm sorry, the shingled hip on the canopy and the shingling cupola on the building to try to soften the impact, soften the impact as much as possible. And use of stone, natural siding as much as possible. So, and we're gonna, we'll provide more testimony to that later in our case in chief. But the, those specific questions were asked and I know I still got work to do on a couple of them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board for allowing us to.
I have one question before he comes up. Do you have a traffic study?
Yes.
Hour by hour?
Yes.
Okay.
And in your packet, there was a.
I didn't see it, I looked, I apologize.
Oh, okay. There was a binder in your packet with counts that were updated, and we've even updated them since then and we'll probably, we'll.
I apologize. I looked, we've looked at this packet so many times, I've probably misplaced it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There is a, there is a traffic. And Mr. Chevlin from Par Engineering who prepared that, if we get to him tonight, we'll begin to testify on it.
I'm thoroughly confused. We just hopped around. I'm sorry, Karen Benson on behalf of Preserve Tiverton.
Weren't you still cross-examining? Thought you were still cross-examining the witness when we broke.
That is correct. Christopher Duvideo for the butter, Ms. Hayward. I think just before I go into the cross-examination of Mr. Pimentel, there's a somewhat of a bit of a point of order. As I read your zoning board of review rules of procedure, documents are supposed to be submitted 10 days in advance of a hearing, and if they're not, they shall not be considered. I mean, I could.
Well, I think we've already discussed that. Anybody, anything that came out that you didn't have copies of, we'll give you as much time as you need to review them, and so I see no prejudice.
So let me put it on the record, just a second. Madam Chair, I just want to be clear what we'll be allowed to do. We will be allowed to object to the actual exhibits as well. Right now, they're just for identification, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. And I further request that the people who created the exhibits be identified on the exhibits. I would like to object to counsel presenting testimony. That's not appropriate under the rules either. I don't want to belabor the objections, I just want to be sure our right to cross on the actual exhibits are being preserved.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I was just, I gave Mr. Stolzmann the opportunity to get up to sum up all the questions that were raised at their last meeting, that we asked him to look into, and he responded to those. So you can have as much time as you need.
Thank you.
This is not gonna be over tonight.
Understood. Along those lines, I think it's important for the authors of the plans to be available to cross-examine, to ask them questions as to what this means, why they did it. So I don't know who prepared the planometric plan. I believe, I forget, the woman that was up here, she did the.
Are those identifiers on the plans that you've shown us?
If they're not, we'll make whoever, whoever produced that data available. That's not a problem for us.
And let counsel know who those people are.
Yeah, we will, we'll identify the appropriate person with respect when we submit the plans in supplement. I would, I would object, in the zoning regime and also in your rules, there are often factual representations made on behalf of the client that counsel does do, and that's.
I'm sort of taking your comments as an opening to point out what you're gonna, what you're gonna have your experts testify to in the course of this year.
Well, that's true. In some cases, client representations though are typically accepted as submissible and your rules do allow that. Those fact statements as to what would be permitted, what would be attempted, and the site plan itself are not, you know, are not.
Counsel, my only concern is whatever gets admitted, they have a fair opportunity to review it, rebut it, call them as their own witness or, you know, anything. I mean, I don't care how long this takes.
Yeah, we're in agreement, we're in violent agreement.
Yeah.
Thank you. So I suspect that Mr. Pimentel will be here, am I correct?
Yes, he comes over here and he goes over there.
So I was wondering if, I can't get your name, I apologize, Mr. Engineer, if you could just give me some space here where your computer is.
Sure, you want to move the computer?
Just so I have an opportunity to, any of the mic, be able to say.
Yeah, just move it to the right.
Yeah, just so I have. All right. Thank you.
Who's already spoken?
Okay. Mr. Pimentel, you're still under oath.
Yes, Mr. Pimentel. Be with me for one second here. Here we go. So we, you testified before, we engage in a colloquy, if you will. And so I just to sort of, I want to summarize what your testimony, and I've taken this from your transcript, these aren't gotcha questions, it's just the ability to sort of bring us up.
One second. You can't keep turning away because she's having a hard time hearing you, so you don't, you either bring the mic in your hand or she's literally struggling to hear you.
How about that? Is that better?
Yeah, well, we'll try.
Then we'll begin to cover some new ground.
Okay.
Okay. So the signage for the property is subject to a special use permit. And whether to approve the signage is dependent on several factors to be considered by the zoning board of review.
That is correct.
And the subject property is owned, general commercial.
Correct.
G C.
Correct.
And I use your word inherently, the property is owned for a filling station and drive-through restaurant, but these uses must meet the six criteria for a special use permit.
That is correct.
And those uses meet, at least based on your testimony, three of those standards. I believe you said that it is in the public's convenience and welfare will be served.
It will.
It will be compatible with neighboring uses and won't be a nuisance.
Correct.
And then lastly, it is compatible, or I shouldn't say compatible, consistent.
Consistent.
With the comprehensive plan. Interestingly, that's, they used both those terms in the new legislation, compatible and consistent, and I share the difference. You also indicated that the project must serve the public convenience and welfare of the surrounding neighbors. The design of the project affects whether the public convenience and welfare of the surrounding neighbors is served. You were not able to opine on the public convenience and welfare vis-à-vis lights and traffic, correct?
That is a design requirement which we have respective experts to address.
So it's outside of your scope of expertise? And you stated that the project could be harmful if the project was not designed correctly.
No, I don't believe the project could be harmful if it wasn't designed correctly. Obviously, a zoning ordinance has two components to it. It has both a use component and then it has a dimensional component. The dimensional criteria imposes those restrictions and limits to ensure that the property isn't overdeveloped, overmasked to protect the surrounding public. Then we don't need dimensional relief.
So if it was, if it was designed incorrectly, such that it was creating a nuisance, would that then be harmful to the neighbors?
I'm not, and with all sincerity, I'm not sure if I understand the question correctly, but let me try to answer if I am. So as pursuant to the granting of a special use permit, perhaps the primary role of this board beyond, of course, you have to satisfy the standards, is they have the right to impose reasonable conditions. And there's a, there's a performance criteria conditions, it's in their regulations. And those are to ensure that if there is a potential concern or something emanating from the way it's designed, if they believe so, they can impose reasonable conditions to reflect that, to correct that. That's what that's all about. I don't believe it's because it's going to cause a nuisance, I think it's just to ensure that it's the best development possible.
So it could be designed in a manner that could be adverse to neighbors, except if the zoning board of review were to place some conditions on that potential impact to mitigate the harm or nuisance to the neighbors?
Well, if a particular neighbor has a perceived concern, let's say about like Mr. Alzak, I don't want to mess up your name, sorry, sir. I apologize. Obviously, the board's here's role is to ensure that you're protecting the public and their concerns. So if there's a perceived concern about the visual impact of lighting, how do you address that? You do that A through downward directing, you do that to enhance landscaping, that isn't, so my point is, it's not that the viewing, the lighting is creating a nuisance, but it is a concern and there's. but it is a concern, and there's ways to mitigate that concern.
Sure, but I'm just focusing on the area that you're an expertise, you're your expert in, right? That it is compatible with the neighboring uses, that it serves the public convenience and welfare, right, and that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. So my question is, as we review this design, you've said that it won't be incompatible with the neighboring uses.
Correct.
However, if it were incompatible, then you're saying that the responsibility of the zoning board of review to mitigate those potential impacts?
No, no. If something is absolutely incompatible, the board is going to make a determination that it doesn't meet that standard.
Very good.
What I'm saying is, a design, a set of uses or a singular use that's already determined to be allowed by special use permit, right, there isn't a lot of discretion in that. There's already some conditional component that it is in fact consistent. The reality though is, in the design of it, what can we do to make sure that if there are perceived concerns, can we do something to address those concerns? That's where the conditions come in. So it's not that we're starting off with a project that could be incompatible, and let's see if we can make it compatible. That's not what an SUP is.
Right, that's, I guess, my whole point, is that it could be compatible and it could be incompatible. We just don't know yet until we see the final design, correct?
The design, obviously and absolutely, has a big play in this, not only from this board's perspective, because this board addresses the operational components of it. That's why you have areas of performance criteria that they address. Then subsequent to them, through the preliminary stage, when you go to preliminary, you do the hard engineering and the hard design, there too, you make sure it's the best development feasible.
Now, you indicated that this project would serve the public's convenience and welfare because everyone needs gas.
Everyone needs gas, everyone uses convenience, most people, most people, in fact, most people utilize drive-throughs for a variety of reasons, and not just simply because people are lazy. Pharmacies have done great studies of these. Women with children, elderly people, a firm people, a great component of people utilize drive-throughs for those reasons. So yes, it does serve the public health and welfare. It's a great service to the public.
And you indicated that part of that welfare is increasing the tax base to alleviate the taxes borne by residential taxes.
Well, actually, that goes to my argument of one of the main reasons why I determine to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, because it does add another source of revenue, and that is a great concern of this community in their comprehensive plan.
So just to be clear, and I'll get back to taxes in a moment. Just to be clear, a filling station and a drive-through restaurant project generally and inherently are allowed in the G C zone, but are, but a specific project with these uses are subject obviously to the special use permit criteria.
In the G C district, correct.
So depending on the design, will determine whether or not those six criteria could be met.
The design goes to the quality of the project and ensuring that perceived concerns and those types of things are all being satisfied to the extent practicable. I mean, you can't render a commercial development invisible, right? That's an impractic, impracticable demand of a commercial development, right? If I see the commercial development, it's grounds that it's inherently inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, or will create a nuisance. That is not a standard that's attached to any SUP.
Sure. No, no, I get it, right? So if someone owns a piece of property, in this case, is owned G C, they have to be able to put that property to use, and if they're not, for various reasons, it could be constituted taking, but we know up the street there's a, I believe, like a gym. Right? Are you familiar with the area? There's a gym up the road.
I didn't memorize every specific use that's on. I know that it's commercially zoned. I've done an analysis and looked at a variety of commercial uses. I didn't memorize every use that's on that.
So...
It's on Main Street.
Are you familiar with the uses in and around this project?
As, I've driven up and down the neighborhood when I initially did this report. We've been going on this for a couple of years.
Sure.
And then, of course, as determined by the comprehensive plan, how properties are zoned, what uses would be allowed in those zones, from that perspective.
Right, but to your point that something needs to go here, it doesn't necessarily mean it has to be a filling station, a drive-through. It could be some other use that's allowed in the G C zone.
I didn't say that. What I'm saying is that the things you're talking about, design, lighting, right, the things that could be things that are inherent, a by right use are going to have those similar conditions. They're going to have lighting associated with them. There's going to be vehicular movement associated with them. It's a by right development. You don't even have the opportunity to bring it before the zoning board and try to impose reasonable conditions. So it's, you're not going to render commercial development invisible. So what you have to do is you have to rely on A is what is the comprehensive plan indicating is inappropriate from a broad perspective for the property and the area? And then the zoning ordinance is the specific regulatory tool that makes a determination as to what uses should or shouldn't go there.
But not all G C uses are the same, is my point, right? So a gas station with a drive-through,
Yep.
restaurant is different than a gym. Both are commercial, both will have some signage, maybe both will have some lighting possibly, but they're going to be different in terms of that design of each one project. So not all uses that are identified in a G C are necessarily compatible in each G C parcel in this town.
That, correct. That's the uniqueness of an SUP, that you have to look at the individual characteristics and qualities of that property. This is why when you're reviewing a comprehensive plan and you're making a general determination of consistency, what is unique about this property that is so appropriate for this development? A, the location, look at the roadway infrastructure, look at the presence of all infrastructure, look that the property is already disturbed. We're not asking to take a green space because that is a concern of this town and disturb it. In fact, it was used for an oil tank farm. It was used for industrial purposes. So when you look at all those characteristics, that is why it's so appropriate on this property versus perhaps other G C property where it may not be appropriate.
So I want to get to this tax base. Now, I'm not trying to be facetious, but I know you're not an economist.
Nope.
Do you know the overall tax revenue for the town of Tiverton?
No.
What is the existing tax for this, for the property right now?
I do not know.
What will be Seasons' tax contribution to the town?
You'd have to ask the operator.
Could, so we have gross tax, right, there'll be some taxes generated because this new building is existing. But we talk about net tax for a second. So if there is a devaluation in the residential property surrounding this project, then there'll be less taxes generated because those houses will be worth less.
I think you need to ask those questions. I think it's Mr. Hul would be the expert in that field.
Well, I'm not asking whether or not the houses will be depreciated in value. That's a Hul thing. I get it. But you're saying that this is going to be good for the town because it's going to create increased taxes.
It will create another revenue stream, yes.
Okay. A gross revenue stream.
A new revenue.
A new revenue stream.
Correct.
Will that new revenue stream affect existing revenue streams?
I don't know.
You don't know?
I know it will generate a new revenue stream. We know that the property, the town of Tiverton has 20 to 30 properties approximately zoned in a G C district manner pursuant to the G I S. Obviously, the community went out, because that's the obligation of the community, to make a determination, because that's a very sparse few properties, right? So why are these properties appropriate for G C? That was the conclusion of this community? And obviously, they want to maximize such so few properties, such a concern of a heavy reliance on residential, that they want to see these new revenue streams in. So from that broad-based perspective, because that's what the complaint says, it meets that. It checks the box.
So broadly speaking, right, but we know that each project is site-specific, fact-specific, design-specific.
That's true.
Okay. So just back to this, it'll provide a public service gasoline convenience store.
Sure.
Are you aware there's one, one-half mile up the road?
Yes.
Okay. If Seasons outcompetes that gas station and it goes under, fails, then that tax revenue no longer exists, correct?
No, but if that happens, you got to believe then that the property at some point is going to be reutilized for some other commercial purpose. The town of Tiverton only has a sparse few properties across the boards zoned in the variety of commercial designations from neighborhood all the way to highway. When a, markets dictate when a property is going to be reused. In the community I am now, properties that have been since vacant and underutilized are all being taken up and reused. So if that were to occur, and I'm not sure that's going to happen, it's two gas stations, there's going to be demand for more than one, it'd be, at some point, it'd be reused for some other commercial purpose.
You just said something, there's a demand for more than one. Have you done a market analysis for the need for gas stations in Tiverton?
Did I do it?
Yeah.
No, I'm just taking, I'm just making a general comment, that there's demand for gas, there's demand, they do their market studies, right? They do their market studies, the operator.
Sure.
Right? And based on that, they found that this location was an appropriate location. They're not going to locate somewhere where they think it's going to be unsuccessful.
Well, that's, you're absolutely right, because I have clients who do exactly what Seasons does, is that they, they look at the market share and they say, maybe only one gas station is needed, and because we're the first off the highway, we're going to get all that business. That could have been their calculation too.
I don't know, you have to ask the operator.
You're the one that indicated that surely there could be enough for two gas stations.
No, I said that, yeah, it could be. I don't know the answer to that, but the point is, I can state that it was this community's determination that these uses were appropriate on this property. The community could have prohibited it.
Well, we're going to get to that in a second.
Okay.
So that gas station a half mile up the road, convenience store gas station, you know whether or not that's family-owned or corporate-owned?
I don't know. I didn't do any analysis of that gas station.
How about Colby's? Is that family-owned or is that corporate-owned?
You have to ask Colby how the structure is.
Well, you did say in your report, speaking to the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan wants to encourage family-owned sustainable businesses.
Yeah. Well, it's in the comprehensive plan, but that doesn't preclude a corporate from opening up a business.
I completely agree, and we had this discussion last time where I think, and I'm not trying to start a fight, that you suggested it was silly, because you're right, there are going to be certain aspects of the comprehensive plan that are met, and there are going to be certain aspects that are not.
Actually, I disagree with that concept. There is no such thing as meeting and un-meeting. The comprehensive plan lays out broad-based goals and objectives. And when you're fulfilling one goal and objective, the way you're trying to interpret, you're actually succeeding in fulfilling other objectives. For example, if we take advantage of utilizing this property to the extent practicable and feasible, because it's already zoned G C, it's already disturbed on the main roadway, we stop the creeping effect of perhaps, if they can't stabilize a tax base, of having decided eating properties in other areas of town south where they're trying to protect the rural character. So utilizing this property in its manner, when we say we're trying to preserve the rural character, it actually works together.
I agree. Let's sacrifice this neighborhood for the south. Okay.
We're not going to do this.
Sir, sir.
Okay.
Sir, I know I have to answer that question, sir. Sir, the town zoned it G C, not I.
Okay, so now you indicated that it was compatible with the surrounding properties because around this subject property is zoned G C.
That's correct.
Okay. Would you agree that within 750 feet in any direction around this subject property is currently used as residential?
Yes.
Okay, so it's true that the town, when they zone this, the town council, zoned this as G C with an awareness that the surrounding property was used as residential, but they knew inherently or intuitively that they had a safety valve, that we have a special use permit which says, yeah, it's G C, and not all G C can accommodate every use that's in the use table. We're going to make sure that whatever's put there is not going to be incompatible with the surrounding neighborhood, isn't going to cause a nuisance, right? Is not, is not going to be antithetical to serving the needs and welfare of the residents that live around it. Is this, you think that it's safe to say that the town council used this?
And how could he possibly answer that question? How can this witness testify to what the town council intended on passing an ordinance?
In your experience, Mr. Piment, let me ask you this. Are you experienced on the process by which a comprehensive plan is approved?
Yes, actually, it's written in my procedural analysis report how the town of Tiverton does it.
So you're familiar with how the town of Tiverton does it?
Yes.
Okay. And so is it safe to say, even though you weren't there at those hearings, that a town council, when they zone, this Tiverton town council zoned this property as G C, they were aware that the surrounding uses were residential?
Of all the G C properties.
Of all the G C properties?
Correct.
And this one in particular?
Correct.
Okay. And it was, do you think it was the intent of the town council? If you can speculate based on your expert experience.
Sure.
No. No.
Okay. So we don't know.
Sustained.
We don't, we don't know, we don't know then if the town council understood what they were doing based on... Because I can't ask you that question.
I don't know.
I can't ask you that question, right?
I don't know if I'm, I don't know if I'm supposed to answer.
No, you're not going to, you're not going to answer the question.
So you don't, so, okay, so we have this property now, within 750 feet is all residential.
Yes.
Okay. Do you think that the property directly to the south, Mr. Winter's property, okay, that this use is compatible with his use?
I think it can be made compatible, absolutely.
As designed right now?
Yes, with proper landscaping and so forth, yes, it can be very compatible.
The landscaping that's been presented?
No, no, I said, this project still has iterations to go through. We're at the zoning board level. We haven't even gotten to the design, which is done at the preliminary.
So it could be, but it couldn't be as well?
No, I'm saying it could, it will be.
Oh.
It will be designed to be compatible, and it is compatible. There's no reason why it's incompatible.
When you say it will be, have you seen any plans that we haven't seen?
No, I'm just saying the uses can be well-accommodated in this neighborhood. Other than I don't want the use, that, I mean, that maybe is your grounds, we don't like the use, we don't want the use, but that's not a grounds for a denial.
So the general commercial district, as I understand it, this is defined in the zoning ordinance. It states this district contains areas of the town which form the basic... This is the definition of general commercial district. I'm sure you're familiar with it. This district contains areas of the town which form the basic pattern of retail and service businesses serving the community, and the areas planned for expansion of such businesses. In contrast, highway commercial, due to its proximity to a highway, is intended to serve regional highway needs. Now, you've indicated, as well as I believe the application indicates, that this Seasons' project is intended at a minimum to serve regional needs.
It serves both local and regional.
Sure.
That's why it's located right next to the highways. It's going to serve both local and regional, you know, obviously.
Why didn't the town zone it as highway commercial then?
You have to ask the town. You have to ask the town.
Shouldn't the town have zoned it as highway commercial?
Objection. I object. Sustained.
You, you work as a planner, correct? You're a certified planner.
Chris, so let me just remind you and the members of the audience that we're dealing with the zoning code as it's currently written, and the standards that are in the zoning code as written. So could the town eventually have zoned this industrial? Sure. Could they have zoned it residentially? Yes. Could they have zoned it open space? Yes. But we're here as a special use permit as to what it's zoned today. So that's, and this board has standards which they have to apply based upon how it's zoned today. So whether or not it could have been zoned something different is really irrelevant to the special use permit that this board is now required to indicate whether they meet the standards.
Okay, and for the record, and I hate to belabor this, because I want to perfect this record in event this has to go up on an appeal, okay? So I do want to make a point in this matter. The point is being made is that general commercial is intended for community needs, not regional needs. Highway commercial is. This project is intended to reach both community and regional. And because it's intended to serve regional, it's more suited for highway commercial, because highway commercial specifically states that's what it's for. That's the only legal point that I'm trying to make.
We're not here to rewrite the law. I mean, the law is what it is.
The law is what it is. I'm just making a point that this project is admitted by the witness. the, the witness, is intended to serve regional needs.
Well, as you also know, that this zoning board overturned a decision of the planning board where they made such a similar finding, and that it wasn't supported by the record. So, and that's currently on appeal, so...
It, it certainly is, and I imagine that we might be on an appeal with this one as well, right? So, but I just want to preserve the record, I, I, I apologize, Ms. Chairwoman, not trying to be argumentative, I just wanted to make sure I preserved the record.
Good point.
Thank you. That's all for this witness right now.
Thank you.
Erin Benson, on behalf of Preserve Tiverton. Good evening, Mr. Pimental.
Good evening.
Members of the board, I lost my glasses, I'll do the best I can. It's fair to say that you testify a lot before zoning boards and planning boards, correct?
I do.
And you've qualified for an expert, as an expert many, many times, all around the state of Rhode Island, in fact, fair to say? We've worked together in other cases.
Correct.
All right. And sometimes you, you represent developers, such as this application?
Ninety-five percent of the time.
And sometimes you do represent objectors, or people who are concerned and wish to either modify a development, or try to see it not permitted. Is that fair to say?
I have.
You have.
Not, not, not that often, and less frequently, as I go forward in my career.
But in so doing, whoever you're representing, your report reflects that you do some of the following, you become familiar with the physical characteristics of the lot in question that's proposed for development, yes?
I, I have to.
Yeah, okay. And you become familiar with the goals of the client, as well as the actual mechanics of the development, that's fair to say?
Yeah, sure.
Client goals are important to how you're going to testify, and what your report's going to say.
The client goals are important, because if there's something specific, or unique, or significant in the comprehensive plan, or the zoning regulations, that may preclude one of their goals, I've got to bring that to their attention. I'm not going to go up and testify against something that's blatantly in the comp plan, or the zoning laws that would say, no, and I'm saying that I wouldn't do, so I, obviously, I need to know what their specific demands are out of this property, before I can feel comfortable if I can support that development or not.
So I'll take that as a yes?
Yes.
Okay. And you agree, and you testified actually on the 22nd of last month, that in the instance of the special use permit, what we have here, all of the elements of the current ordinance must be met by the applicant, correct?
Well, there are the standards, they have to be satisfied.
All of the standards. You acknowledged this on the 22nd of this year.
Well, that's the law.
Okay, so they'll take that as a yes. Now, I'm going to give you a hypothetical. You're going through the comp plan for the town of Tiverton, and you're interpreting the comprehensive plan for this project, okay?
Okay.
It is possible to make a contrary argument specifically to the comp plan that says, we should manage growth so that historic small-town character of Tiverton is not lost. Is it not?
No, you take that, and you use that to ensure that the ultimate design reflects that criteria. That's not used to preclude the development.
You testified a moment ago that there's a risk with all development, in this narrow corridor, in fact, that there'll be some creeping commercialism. I don't know if you used that word, but you talked about creeping.
No, no, no.
No?
No, what I said was that, the town, obviously, when the town put this comprehensive plan together, they realized what areas you have the requisite infrastructure to accommodate growth, what areas have already been disturbed, what areas historically have been developed for residential and commercial purposes, and then those areas that lack all those qualities, the areas that have been maintained in a pristine manner, you want to preserve that. That is what means to preserve the rural character. I said, if you don't start taking full advantage and utilize these properties to realize a stable tax base, to realize the need for services, you may end up having a creeping effect in those areas where those qualities lack, but you may have to do that and start rezoning properties. It actually says in the comp plan, we, we're trying to avoid the act of rezoning properties that we may not want to. That's why you have to take full advantage of these properties, and that's what I meant by the creeping effect, to protect and preserve the areas that is well, well documented in the comprehensive plan.
Okay. You testified on cross earlier, that although it's zoned general commercial, it is virtually surrounded by residential, R-40 and R-60, right?
Across the streets, and behind the other big property.
Okay. And that's actually on page five of your first report. You incorporate that conclusion, that observation, that's a fact of this zone.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
And you also have a figure in your report, it's called the future land use map, it's part of the comprehensive plan.
Correct.
And you rely on that to draw some of your conclusions, right?
I rely on that, because the community, when they determine the appropriateness of land uses, because the zoning ordinance must be consistent with the comprehensive plan, it's important to see, does this zoning classification, does that reflect what the intent was in the comprehensive plan, and that's why I addressed the future land use map.
I'll take that as a yes, too.
Well, it's just a point of consistency.
Okay, all right. That future land use map is pretty illustrative, isn't it? I don't have it, I'm sorry, in an electronic format, but it's fair to say that it's a tiny, narrow corridor of commercial use. It's page, figure 5.4 of your plan.
Yeah.
Yeah. Figure 5.4.
Page 5.
On page 5, I'm sorry. It's quite illustrative, because it does show for the larger scope of that part of town, except for this little red area of general commercial, it's largely residential. Not just in the immediate vicinity, that whole corridor.
No, the whole corridor is primarily commercial.
The, the flum...
The Main Street?
Yes.
Is classified commercial for the, for the, almost the entire length, all the way up to Fall River.
Yes, but it's, a narrow strip is the point I'm trying to make. It doesn't go away from the main road at all.
Actually, actually, if you follow the pattern of the commercial, it's following the pattern of the parcels. So these parcels were bigger parcels, that's why it juts out, and then the smaller parcels, it judded in, and if you go further up, you can see where it tends out, because it's basically trying to reflect the character of the parcels, and that's why in the comprehensive plan, it notes that, it is, it notes in about Main Street, it's one of the primary areas that should be protected and preserved for commercial development purposes for that reason, because it's, it's one of the few areas where you have historical commercial development, you have the infrastructure, so we need to maximize that.
Okay, I'm reading the flum differently. I'm saying, Main Road is a very narrow band of commercial use, virtually surrounded by high and medium density residential.
To the rear of it.
To, yes.
Right, but, but they didn't take a swath.
No, I'm not saying, I'm calling it as, I'm not characterizing.
They reflected the parcels that were historically developed for commercial.
All right.
They, they followed the historical pattern of the properties that were developed for commercial.
Just give me a moment, please. No, thank you. It would be fair to say that these operations are not going to take place within the historic district, correct?
I'm not aware of any historic districts in the town, but this is not in the historic district.
Oh, you didn't, I'm sorry, you didn't cover that in your report?
No, the property is not in an historic district.
Okay. That's all I have then, thank you. Thanks.
Okay.
Any member of the board have any questions?
We might be on an agreement with this. They could propose a plan, and it fits our general commercial use, but in order for us as a small town to find it even reasonably acceptable, it need to be, might not fit their business profile, but it need to be brought on this small-town operation to fit the rest of the Main Street area. It is a commercial zone, but everything on that road is a smaller, I mean, we have a couple of big companies, like Humphries, whatever, but they've been around, the existing non-conformers I used with their signage, they had put in the application, you cannot bring this Taj Mahal and insist on putting it in a neighborhood and say, oh yeah, it fits, because that's what Shell want, it fits what Seasons want.
Yeah, I, having done, I don't know, a half a dozen to a dozen of, and they, they've, they've got quite a large quantity of, of operations, so I probably have done about a half a dozen to a dozen, and I've worked on the variety. When it comes to me, it's about the scale of the property, and the massing of the development in proportion to that. I'm just, I'm not just saying this because this is what we purported, I'm saying that the massing and scale of this development is very, very reasonable, given the size of this lot, and, and given that this is a corner lot, which is, was so key, it's so key from a design perspective, the corner lot situation. So, I don't believe that this is a large-scale development, even from a small-town's perspective. I've done developments in Jamestown, I've done them all over. If we were going for something on an urban scale in this town, I would have ever had a problem with it, too. We're not asking, the, the lot in East Providence, which is smaller than this, is much more packed, compact, it's an urban environment, you obviously can accommodate more. That is not what we put forth here. And I've done rural, and I've done very urban developments, for not only this client, but other clients. But having said that, if there's something that's practicable and feasible, that tries to mitigate everybody's concerns, obviously, that's what, why we had this discussion and conversation in the design.
So I have one more question. If you, if you were building a, a gas station, as I've done, and they've done themselves, in a general commercial in a small town is one thing, and the building a gas station in your mind thinking it's a highway commercial, the size of that station changed, your number, your prediction, your anticipation to how many gallons you're going to sell, and how many pumps, and what's going to be inside, it changes, your study changes. This is zoned a general commercial. In your opinion, as a general commercial, should be the same size if you put in a highway commercial?
I don't, I don't think that the zoning of the GC or the HC makes a difference in that regard. I think it's got to be based on the uniqueness of the characteristics of the property.
So you...
So if I had, if we had a property that was half the size of this parcel, but zoned in a highway commercial manner, you still could only accommodate so much massing on that property. So it's not going to be the characteristics of the zoning designation, it's going to be the characteristics of the property, where it's located, proximity, where, where next to Route 24, et cetera, et cetera. Those are the things I look for. If the community, once again, felt that this particular property, given its location, was inappropriate for this use, either the zoning of the property should have been different, or that you should have been precluded from the zone.
Last question. So you said you sat with everybody, and you discussed it with them, they were, you know, talk them out of something that won't get approved, there's something that doesn't get approved. Through these meetings, you want to tell me, never was said, brought up to your mind, you know, it's a general commercial, but really, we have a benefit of the highway. You know, you know, this is, we're looking at these numbers, we're looking at these pumps to produce as highway commercial numbers.
It's in my report. My report has always referred to this operation as both serving the local and regional needs, no question about it. All gas stations do.
Which is exactly what...
All, all gas stations do. I've gone, I've gone far off the beaten path and found a gas station when I'm in a meeting, in, in interior of a town. It doesn't mean I'm not going to use the, purchase gas from them, I mean...
That's not the purpose of it, though. We built gas stations before, way off the beaten path, but we didn't call them a highway gas station, we didn't put a, you know...
No, but I'm not...
Our numbers wasn't based on the highway traffic, was based on the local traffic.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, but...
Two street, one second, please.
Yeah, sorry.
Two-street lane, around the bend, where residential and rounded, when we built a gas station up a street from them, we looked at it as a local traffic, not coming off Route 24. So the expectation, when you're trying to build this Taj Mahal, need to be reduced, and accept to reduce it, because you're looking at two main highways, I don't care where Route 24 is. This is based in general commercial, and if you sat with these people and discussed it with them, shame on everybody who think the numbers come off the highway, this is, should be based on general commercial property on Main Road in Tiverton, Rhode Island.
Oh, I, I, I fully believe that this is going to serve the local public to a great extent, but I've got to be sincere, obviously, if you have a gas station, and you're going through the Route 24, and you have something that's within a quarter of a mile, half a mile, mile and off, and you have need of gas, you're going to stop. It's going to serve some regional need. I mean, to say otherwise would be dishonest.
We should start on both sides of our mouths, thank you.
Thank you.
Does any member of the public wish to question the witness?
Another question.
Oh, sure.
Sir, I believe you said that the, that all of the requirements have to be met, met for a special use permit, is that correct?
They all have to be satisfying to this board, yes.
Okay, now, one of the requirements is that adequate provisions have to be made for water surge, sanitary sewage disposal, and fire protection.
Correct.
And one of the special use permits that's being requested is for a sign, or signs. So, if what you're saying is true, then they're going to have to provide water service, sanitary sewage disposal, and fire protection for the signs, is that correct?
No, no, there are, there's, there's several standards that have to be met, right?
There's six standards that have to be met, and that's one of them.
Yeah, I understand, but not, not all those standards are going to be applicable to any particular component.
That's exactly right.
Right.
So you said, though, that all the requirements have to be met.
Well, because we need three special use permits. So I'm taking this development in its entirety.
Well, I think what, what we're saying really is that this board has to decide which requirements apply and which don't.
That is your role, that's correct.
Okay, but before you had said that all of them have to, have to be met in order to give the relief, the special permit that they're asking for.
Right, because we need a special use permit for the fuel dispensing.
Am I...
We need a special use permit for the...
Am I missing something? No. All right, I, I think we agree then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is, is someone in the, please, someone down, I said, down.
Does anybody in the audience have any questions? Could you identify yourself, please?
I certainly can. My name is Gail Lawrence, I live in Tiverton, and I would like to ask a few questions of the witness.
Go ahead.
So I'm interested in the ratio of gas stations to population, and I did a little research, and I found that in order to provide satisfactory service to an area of a population of 100,000 people, you would need 35 gas stations. However, Tiverton has 16,000 people, more or less, not all of whom drive gas-powered vehicles. If you do the arithmetic, that means this community is well-served by having four or five gas stations, and I'm sure that in your traveling around town, you have observed that there are, in fact, five gas stations in our community. So you were trying to justify to us why we needed more gas stations, and I'm really struggling with your concept, because...
I know.
What is your calculation of the ratio of gas stations to population for this community? And if you have not examined that, would you explain why?
Ms. Lawrence, that's an excellent question. Unfortunately, the round Supreme Court has ruled, in, talking about special use permits, and let me just read this, that, we have said that, however, that his zoning board may not deny granting a special exception, which is a special use permit, to a permitted use on the ground that the applicant has failed to prove that there is a community need for its establishment. So that's off the table, as, as...
Okay, so...
This board couldn't even determine that.
Okay.
For the record...
Yeah.
For the record, I want to disagree with the solicitor's reading that a special exception refers to a special use permit. My reading of the case of a special exception refers to area.
That's not...
For the record...
Thank you for the record, I gave you the case, like, Tewey versus Kilday, 415, A-2nd, 732.
I'm familiar with it, I have a study on the case.
All right, very good, thank you.
I'm, I'm fortunately not an attorney, so I, I come at this from a practical, logical point of view, I think, so I guess...
And I appreciate that, and I'm not trying to stop you.
No, I understand.
But I
I do know what you're saying. I do.
I just want to make it clear that this board, if this board were to make a decision that this gas station was not needed because we already have enough gas stations or we have too few gas stations, there would be an appeal in a second, and that appeal would win because that is not a standard that this board can or should be applying.
Okay.
So you can ask your question. I just might I'm just warning you that your question may be irrelevant to the decision of the board.
Okay, so here's another one. It's probably going to be irrelevant for the same reason. But so as a planner, what do you see as the benefits to the air, water, light and noise pollution? How does that fit in your calculation for this particular community? And you mentioned that your comments last time that Kobea was entitled to put this gas station in. So my question is, aren't the residents of this community entitled to cleaner air, cleaner water, no soil contamination, no light pollution, no unnecessary noise pollution? And how do we balance the needs of Kobea against the, really, the health and public safety needs of our town? And I guess who will compensate us for the loss of those very important things?
Well, first of all, a lot of those engineering standards that you mentioned can be properly addressed by other individuals who are experts in those fields. But what I can say is, those standards that you had mentioned, there are regulatory standards that have to be met at each level. There's D E M regulations. There's standards in the land development subdivision regulations. There are standards in the zoning ordinance. They even have the right pursuant to performance criteria to impose conditions. So that, in fact, those concerns are appropriately addressed so that your concerns are satisfied, and I concur with you.
Okay, good. That's a good answer. So I have another one. Will there be an environmental impact statement filed and at what level and by whom?
I don't know. I refer that question to the design team. I that's not that's not within my field of expertise.
My sweater is hooked on a nail. Excuse me.
Be careful.
Okay, there we go. So
There is, Ms. Lawrence, there is
Will we answer that question?
One of the experts that the Kobea has is an environmental expert. That question was probably better asked for that person.
Have a good answer for that?
But we have a report that's also on file that you could always read.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, so I guess my mind is not just on Tiverton as I ask you the next question. You indicated that you're primarily serving commercial interests and helping them review comp plans and so on.
No, 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 no.
95% of your clients are commercial?
No, 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 no.
Developers?
No, no, 95% of my, no, 95% of my clients are developers, but I would say probably half to two-thirds of my work is affordable housing.
Okay, fair. Okay, I
For private developers, yeah.
Okay, I only heard the 95% part.
Yeah.
But so this is a broader thing, and I would like to know directly to you as a planner, how are you advising communities, particularly coastal communities, to be more resilient in the face of climate change, in the fact that we are in an existential period in Earth's history, and a gas station is totally incompatible? Gas stations have been declining in the United States since 1994. Defunct gas stations are very costly to mitigate. You are talking about disturbing already disturbed soils, and I can't imagine what will get stirred up when that happens. So what's your resiliency strategy for us?
I don't I don't even know how to begin to answer that question to do with this development, so I don't
I rest my case.
Barbara, would you like a break? Yes. Why don't we take a recess, 15-minute recess? Are you all set, Barbara? Okay, we're back from our recess. Would our witness please come back? And does any member of the public have any questions? Come on up and state your name.
First, I'd just like to thank the board for taking this very seriously. I really appreciate it. As a citizen of Tiverton, my name is Celeste Ferendo Canfield, and um
Can you spell your name for the record, please? Just spell your name.
I'm sorry?
Could you spell your
Yes. Celeste, C E L E S T E. Ferendo, F as in Frank, E R E N D O. Canfield, C A N F I E L D.
Thank you.
So I've seen the Seasons gas stations around everywhere. They're very big. They're very bright, and the lights are, you can see them from quite a distance. And my concern is now, first, they said that they're going to plant trees, and I've seen the pictures, and then something was said about seedlings. Now, if they're deciduous trees, there won't be any leaves in the winter, so there will be not no masking of the lighting, and there's a lot of residential area around. And if they're evergreens, they will take forever to grow. So by the time 2035 comes around, 10 years from now, there will be no more gas cars sold in Rhode Island. So I don't understand why we would need this station. How do you feel about that?
About the need for
About the need for this station and the good it's going to do for the people who live here, who have to live with those bright lights and however many hours traffic. Not 24 now? It's not 24 hours now?
It is not 24 hours, but the council can tell you the exact hour arrangement.
But it's still go well into the night with the lights.
Mantle testifies as to the planning and performance of the comprehensive plan. He's willing to answer all questions on that, but as to need, et cetera, that's not
I think our town solicitor, you know, said before the break that need is not relevant to our
I'm sorry?
Need for a gas station is not one of the areas that we have to consider.
Okay, but the lighting and how it affects
He's only a comprehensive plan expert. I think your question would be better directed to their lighter
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that. I am concerned also about the fact, like, with the casino being opened such late hours, we often have a lot of problems, the police rushing over there to solve problems. Places that are open late at night can often also be a meeting place for other activities that are undesirable.
I don't think this is the
So these are not
This is not the question for this witness.
Okay, well, I apologize.
It's okay.
But I did want to make those points, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Hi. Could you state your name for the record, please?
Susan Anderson, Main Road. One of the criteria for the special use permits is that it will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, morals or welfare. And it will not create a nuisance, another one, is that it will not create a nuisance in the neighborhood nor hinder or endanger vehicular or pedestrian movement. Are you aware that when the Seasons Corner Market opened in Fall River in October of 2016, that there have been four armed robberies that occurred, have occurred at that particular location, which is all commercial, not in a residential area like this is? The first one occurred in, it opened in October 2016, and a year later, it the first armed robbery occurred. There have been four armed robberies since, and the last one occurred just in August this past year. To me, that means that this is not compatible. It was not, it is detrimental to the public health, safety, morals and welfare, especially when it's located within sight of residences around it. To me, this does not meet the special use criteria to have it at this location.
Was that a, do you want to ask him a question?
Do you think it's still, having this at this location and that one just opened and already have four out of the six years that it's been there, do you think this is going to
I, yeah, I can't speak to a neighborhood-specific situation because I've worked with Kobea now for over for two decades, and they've got many, many locations.
Yeah, they have 70.
I can show you sites that are unbelievably safe in rural communities. So I think you're picking out a specific, I don't even know the specifics of that, to bring that to here. I don't, I first of all
But Tiverton is not that far from Fall River.
I just don't, I don't know. That, when we talk about not be a nuisance, we're talking about conditions of the design not be creating a nuisance.
Oh, I don't think so. I think it's the use.
Let him finish.
So, I mean, a banking facility could potentially be, right, and banks are allowed. So I don't, I don't know how to answer that question because I don't potentially perceive this being a type of neighborhood where people are going to create robberies. Maybe it's the location, the area, I don't know. But I can tell you the design of this will meet those criteria and those standards. They will, it will be a safe design. We're going to meet the environmentals. We have somebody to speak to that. Lighting, landscaping, all of the things that go to the heart of granting a special use permit, we will satisfy. And we will make this a safe environment. I mean, I'd have to refer that question to the operator. I don't know about that location.
To me, any kind of a drive-through or something that's opened late at night, early in the morning, when there's no one else around, because I live on Main Road, within eyesight of this thing, and I don't hear traffic that much after midnight or before 5:00. I don't hear anything.
I can, I can speak eloquently, because I also am a municipal planner, to not only a Seasons Market but several other gas stations in my own municipality, which is an urban environment, and we've never experienced crime like that, ever. Ever.
It's been in the papers.
I don't, I don't work in Fall River. I'm talking about other, I don't know what what's wrong with that location. There's something wrong with that location, I guess. I don't know.
Okay.
I can't speak to that.
I have another question for you. And that's regarding your description of the property. And you said that this, because this site was formerly a tank farm and the soil was disturbed, then it's okay for this to be a gas station again because the soil's already been disturbed?
No, no, no. What I said is that the property's historical usage was industrially oriented. My other point was that the town of Tiverton is trying its best to preserve those areas that have never been disturbed and have been kept in a natural state. This property has already been disturbed, meaning it's already been used for industrial, commercial purposes. So obviously, you'd rather utilize a property like this where you're not deforesting or taking down mature trees and vegetation and stopping areas that you do want to preserve and protect. That's, that was my point in stating that.
Okay. But you understand that there can be other things that are on that can be on this property besides a gas station. For example, remaining nine acres surrounding this was sold to a to a company who sold Kobea their property, and that development was put before the planning board as a mixed use.
Yes.
And it had retail, and it had like studio apartments above it. It had a restaurant. And to me, that was a great, that was a great use for this property. It used almost the whole nine acres. They also have a little overlook park so that they can see, you know, overlook Main Road, overlook towards the villages, towards the the water. But to me, all the architecture fit in with the surrounding residences already there. There weren't any little Kublas. There weren't any metal chrome on any of the developments. It looked just like, it reflected the architecture that surrounds it. To me, that is a better use of this disturbed property than a gas station.
I appreciate what you're saying, but
And I'm saying that, and I'm just saying that, I'm just informing the board also that this is another reason that you can have something else that's commercial that doesn't have to be a gas station in this area.
I don't mean to cut you off.
That's zoned commercial.
This opportunity for you to come up here is to ask him questions. You can testify at the end of the hearing about your feelings about the project in general.
Okay, but I was just asking him if there was something else that he could do besides a gas station that would fit in this.
Zone
And giving him an example.
Zoning ordinance does two things, right? A zoning ordinance, because it's such a valuable tool, a zoning ordinance tells a property owner what the restrictions on the uses of that property are. But equally important, it also tells a property owner inherently what they may be entitled to. So there are uses that are permitted, there are uses that are conditionally permitted. Those variety of uses, then, is up to the right of the property owner to pursue. It isn't the right for someone else to tell them, we don't like any of the uses other than we want you to put it there. That's just not the way property rights work. This property, in the infinite wisdom of this community, these particular uses that we're putting forth, were determined to be conditionally appropriate uses, and that's what we're pursuing. Just like the developer behind didn't pursue a use that would have been inappropriate. He didn't ask to improve it industrially because that would not have been permitted. So he sought what was appropriate for that development, that property, in light of what the zoning ordinance allows, as we're doing, which is our right.
But wouldn't it be easier just to conform instead of going for special uses, just to put something on this property that
I'm sorry.
Met this?
That's, that's not a fair question to this one.
All right. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is John Hebhardt. That's J O N O H and H E B H A R D T. And I just have a few questions, I guess partly for my own education. Does the state of Rhode Island have a classification system for intersections, to your knowledge?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear
I don't
Does the state of Rhode Island have a classification of intersections?
Are you talking about the roadway classification?
The safety classification of an intersection. Does the state of Rhode Island have such a, have a classification scheme for intersections?
First of all, first of all, state DOT does classify all all of the major materials and collecting roadways. But we have a traffic engineer that'll speak to that. I can't speak to the roadway infrastructure.
Okay. The intersection of Main and Souza is a, I've been told, and I wanted to see if you could confirm this, is an intersection that is labeled as dysfunctional.
That is definitely going to be a question for the traffic engineer.
Okay. If you put a property at the source of a dysfunctional intersection that is going to add more dysfunction, meaning traffic emptying from, excuse me, and Tiverton heading south, making a left turn into a gas station.
I'm not trying to cut you off, sir.
Am I in the wrong
Your question
Wrong church.
The wrong church.
Wrong church.
Important questions for the traffic engineer.
These are all traffic questions.
Okay, I thought as a certified planner, these things would be within your realm of understanding.
So, so, let me, let me interrupt. He's being offered by the applicant as a witness to whether this this proposal complies with the comprehensive plan.
Correct.
That's his expertise that he's being presented for.
Correct.
He may have, he may have knowledge about traffic, whatever, but that's not why he's here. The applicant gets to choose what experts they want to have. They do have an applicant, excuse me, they do have an expert who's a traffic engineer who has submitted, by the way, a full report, which is open to the public, and I think your questions are better generated towards that traffic person.
And my only point, then, is that putting something that is going to make congestion worse in an area where congestion is already dysfunctional is not in the best interest or improving towards our financial plan.
In fairness, that's a very good question, and that is a standard that the board, this board could consider whether or not the application as presented would increase the number of stops at this intersection or whatever. But that's, we'll hear that testimony by the expert, not by Mr. Pimentel.
And the last question I had is, if my notion that this is going to be a catastrophic traffic nightmare once installed, who ends up fixing that problem? Who ends up with the burden of fixing that problem? Does Tiverton now have to step in and say, geez, everybody's backing up, everybody's complaining about the traffic, I'm getting it from all sides? Or does the the person putting in the business, are they responsible for making sure that that problem isn't there ahead of time?
I don't think it's a question for this witness. I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's a traffic question.
All right, thank you.
I could, I could tell you one thing, the business is responsible.
The business is responsible?
Yes.
So is it part of the business plan, then, to ensure?
No, but the business is responsible.
So they would have to then put in like a traffic light or
Get the police to direct the traffic.
Yeah. My concern is that that intersection is inherently not elastic.
I'm, I'm just answering your question as a
So those, all those questions will be answered when the traffic studies get. And by the way, the traffic study has been submitted. It's a public record. I encourage everyone to read that traffic study.
Okay, and I'm encouraged, the, I hope there's a rebuttal to that. I hope that there's a non-biased version of that.
It's a study that they submitted, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions to this witness? Hi, please state your name for the record.
Hi, please state your name for the record.
Dan Pontorelli. I have one question for you, sir. Main Street, eight, nine o'clock at night, you can hear the birds chirp, maybe that happens till about six o'clock in the morning. You want to open 24/7 at a drive-through restaurant. Tell me what you expect to get at that time of the night.
Sir, the, the applicant has already made representations to this board that they'll be open from 5:00 AM to, I believe, 12, 12:00 midnight. They're not open 24/7.
So he's closed after that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. That's a condition this board can also impose. That may have been the first question I could have answered. Sorry.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing another.
I'm sure I don't have any redirect of Mr. Pimentel at this time. There may be some further use of his testimony or elaboration at some point in consultation with opposing counsel.
Sure. I appreciate you making him available if, if anything that was presented tonight raises questions for them.
That's right.
And I, I trust counsel can communicate who you want and arrange that before our next hearing.
Our next witness, yes, make sure I've got the right, our next witness is Eric Simpson, an engineer from TG2 Solutions, and he'll be testifying as to the environmental conditions. And by environmental, we're talking about fuel oil, delivery and distribution to vehicles. We'll also, Mr. Simpson's developed quite an expertise and, and will talk to, and he'll explain his methodology with respect to light and noise as well. He's developed, and he can talk about his experiences focusing on gas stations, convenience stores, and environmental impacts from them. So we've submitted his report and his resume, and what I would do is introduce Eric and then ask him to sort of summarize his report and go through, to keep this moving, and go through his conclusions and application to the standards you're reviewing them.
We're going to square Mr. Simpson in.
Yes, I do. Eric Simpson, S-I-M-P-S-O-N, like the TV show. I've been doing that for a long time.
And just to be clear, procedurally, Cheryl Guglielmo will be manning the screen, and there may be some, some direction back and forth. That's okay. So off to the race.
Good evening, everyone can, can everyone hear me in the back? Yeah, I just want to make sure everyone can hear me. My name's Eric Simpson. I'm the owner of a small environmental consulting firm on the Mass Rhode Island border called TG2 Solutions. I've been working with Colbia Seasons Corner Market now for about 10 years. Before that, I did work for Shell. I also do work for the United States Air Force and a couple of other clients. I'm, I'm asked to come here to talk to you about, you know, three items on the special use permit, public convenience and welfare, public health and safety, and neighborhood nuisances. And my name gets brought up a lot, there's a lot of discussion about environmental, there's a lot of discussion about the fuel system, there's a lot of discussion about the history of the property, and then lastly, but not least, light, sound, trash, that sort of thing. So that's what I'm here to speak to you about. This was all, I summarized this in an environmental letter that was presented to the board and available for public. But I'm going to start just with an anecdote. This is what the site used to be. This was a bulk storage tank farm. The property that we're looking at, or that Colbia's looking at, is, is right in here. There were tank farms over here, these are bulk storage, 500,000 gallon plus tanks. These are a smaller set in the property in the back that is not part of this parcel. It appears that this was some form of a fueling rack, which would have served for truck refueling off of these, these terminals. I do know that at least two or three of these tanks were Air Force tanks, the other ones were privately held and operated. And this was present through the early 80s. And I'll start with an anecdote in that my, my grandmother's family came here from Punshal Madera, and they settled in Fall River, because that's where everyone from Madera settles. And as a kid, I used to come visit them, and we had an ice cream shop that we really liked down in Little Compton. And so my parents used to drive me right down Main Road here, along the way from Fall River down to what we used to call, I used to call it the LC. And I used to remember these, and I used to call them stinky marshmallows as a kid, because you could smell them from far up the road, and you can smell them down the way from basically just the fuel that was there. In the 1960s, one of those actually caught fire. The Tiverton Volunteer Fire Department put it out with a bunch of foam. We've now come to learn in the last 10 years that firefighting foam is filled with PFAS, PFOS compounds that are, are not particularly good for the environment. This, in my parlance and an environmental standpoint, is, is what we would call a brownfield site. This is a former industrial property that was heavily utilized and most likely impacted from the petroleum use and probably also the firefighting foam use over the years. It's been redeveloped, obviously, except for, you know, these parcels over here have not. This was left to sort of go fallow here. And that's the, sort of the, the topic of what Seasons wants to do, is they want to build a retail petroleum station here. And I worked for Seasons, and the question came up, Seasons is a family-owned business as a husband and wife that live about 20 minutes from me that own it, although they might be moving to Jamestown, bringing them closer. And I worked for Seasons because Seasons has a history of, of acquiring properties like this, properties that other people don't want and are afraid to touch based on the history, and they redevelop them. And what's good about that is, especially as a, as a retail petroleum development, and how this goes to the public convenience and welfare, is developing a property like this into a gas station allows someone like Seasons to hire someone like me, they have the option of hiring somebody else, to come in and oversee the environmental study of the property, excavate the soil, do any sort of construction, de-watering, de-water treatment, basically remediate the property as part of the development. And this is something that I think is important because a lot of commercial developments that are not gas stations don't touch the subsurface as much as, as a gas station does. If you could, Cheryl, go to the next slide. A gas station involves a canopy, a dispenser, there's underground storage tanks, there's also stormwater infiltration systems. When Seasons develops one of these properties, they basically have been hiring me to oversee the assessment, sampling, environmental testing, reporting to the DEM, and remediation. And this sort of a project involves the removal of anywhere from 2,000 to 5,000 tons of soil. When I come across soil like this that's been previously contaminated, it tends to be recycled into asphalt. There's asphalt batch plants in Massachusetts that'll do this. And basically, my job is to dig this up and clean it up and put it into a condition that's better than it is right now. Colbia did ask me in 2021 to advance four soil borings and conduct tests on soil. I did find petroleum hydrocarbons in every sample that I took at concentrations that are below present Rhode Island reporting standards, but definitely above background. So this is not a pristine property by any stretch of the imagination. And what I hear a lot is, is discussions about the development and whether or not something else could go there. And realistically, only a savvy buyer is going to develop this property based on the history. I work for a lot of commercial companies, commercial buyers, I testified to this at the planning department. A lot of buyers, when they go back to that previous slide and they see those tank farms, they do not acquire it, they do not develop it, they do not do anything. And what I'm really speaking to in terms of, from my opinion, as an environmental professional who does this, has been doing this for 25 years, anytime I have the opportunity to be hired to come in, dig up a site, take residual contamination away, get it recycled into something beneficial like asphalt out in Chicopee, Mass, and put in infrastructure that is, is not contaminated and cleaner, I'm kind of excited to do it. I'd like to see the project progress because I'd like to see this area cleaned up. This is something that, to, I think one of the residents asked about, what does it benefit in terms of soil and groundwater? What it benefits is I get the ability to dig this up and clean this up. Can it stay the way it is? Yes. Did, did someone build an entire condominium complex on top of an old tank farm across the street? Yes, they did. Did they test it? I have no idea. But all I can say is, if this project goes forward, I get the ability to actually test this thoroughly, find all my reports. If I find something that's reportable to the DEM, I report it to the DEM. The DEM would then order Colbia or Seasons to, to do remediation, which we do anyway. And I get to leave this as a cleaner property. So in terms of, the first item in terms of public convenience, I'm not really going to address convenience others have, it is a convenience store. But in terms of public welfare, if I have an opportunity to come into a property like this and I get to actually remediate it, in my mind, I'm doing the public a welfare. And I think, you know, not everybody agrees with what's being proposed here. Not everyone likes the idea that it might be a gas station. I would only argue that a gas station is unique in that I am going to be in the subsurface more than any other development would be. You know, if someone wanted to build self-storage units here, they're only going to touch the top three feet of soil. With the tank system, I'm going all the way down to 15 feet over here. I'm checking the load bearing of the soil underneath the canopy. If that soil is, is unsuitable, that soil comes out. Same thing with the building. I, I have, I have to deal with making sure that the building is protective of human health and the environment, which is a standard that I have to make. And I'm going to investigate that, and I'm going to remove affected soil so that there's a safe building to be constructed. And that's something that is somewhat unique to a gas station that is a benefit to the neighbors, especially the immediate abutting neighbors, because the removal of anything like this is, is always a good thing. In terms of, yes, I, I belabored the environmental point, but I'm going to move to public health and safety. Cheryl, if you could, oh, you have that up, you're way ahead of me. There's been a lot of questions as to what the tank field is and what the tank system is and how a, a gas station works. This is something that I've been consulting with Colbia on for years, and prior to that, I did do consulting for Shell locally here before they sold all of their bulk assets out. Basically, the tanks that we, that Seasons proposes to use are double-wall fiberglass tanks. There's a pair of them. They're each 15,000 gallons. They're manufactured by a company called NOV, which is a subsidiary of Owens Corning. It's made in the USA, they're not made, you know, in China somewhere. They're double-wall tanks with a saltwater fluid inside between the two walls. And the saltwater, water fluid we refer to as brine. It allows us to put probes and sensors inside the double-wall system. There's electrical conductivity associated with saltwater that works better than air. If gasoline were to get, or diesel fuel were to get into the interstitial, or groundwater were to get into the interstitial, alarms immediately go off, and I know that there's an issue either in the inner or the outer wall of the tank. It's a double safety feature. This is basically the current state of the art in terms of petroleum tanks. The next thing that we do is, the tanks are connected to dispensers using underground piping. Colbia uses a piping brand called UPP, which is a seamless double-wall plastic pipe, is a pipe inside of a pipe, if you will. The double wall is seamless, sort of like a seamless gutter, it comes in a long roll. The contractor spreads it all out and connects it directly to the top of the tanks and to the sumps underneath the dispensers. It's pitched so that if there was an issue between the inner wall and the outer wall, fuel would flow back into either the tank or back into the sump, which is a plastic bucket, if you will, underneath the dispenser. Both the tank sumps and the dispenser sumps are wired with probes. This is a Rhode Island DEM requirement that's been adopted recently by Mass. The probes have to be within a half an inch of the bottom of the sump. If there's any liquid, water, gasoline, diesel fuel, whatever, in the sump, it, it shuts down the entire fueling system. They call it positive shutdown. It's a Rhode Island thing that kind of came into being not that long ago. All of our stores are compliant with positive shutdown. They're also compliant with three-year hydrostatic testing, which requires us to fill all the sumps with water and make sure over a period of time that there's no change in the water level. All of these things are things that we do. The system is completely wired. We use a, a programming, a probe system called a Franklin Evo. It's basically a small computer that connects to and talks to all of the sensors, and then also has the convenience of calling me on the phone if anything goes wrong. I do sleep with my phone, in case you're wondering. But that's basically the tank system. There's been several questions that have come from the public, I saw that in the planning board, I haven't heard it here per se, but about vapor and vapor recovery. And hopefully I can clarify how vapor works. A tank is a, is a closed vessel. It, it has fluid in it, and if you think of it like a soda bottle, two-liter soda bottle buried in the, oh, I threw the accident in that, sorry. A soda bottle buried in the ground. If I put liquid into it, I displace air out of it. If I pull liquid out of it, I create a vacuum. Back in the old days, tanks used to be connected with vent pipes that went out off to the side. And when the fuel truck came and they'd put fuel into the tank by gravity, the air would, inside the tank, which has gasoline fumes, would come out the vent. EPA determined that this was not ideal. The California Air Board went one step further, coupled with Massachusetts, and started a significant push to eliminate vapor emissions from tanks. At this point, both Rhode Island, Massachusetts, and New Hampshire, the three states that I operate in, have adopted California Air Board, they call it CARB, emissions standards. And what that means is, the tank system now operates under a vacuum. It's a closed system. Every time a customer comes to a dispenser and fills up 10 or 20 gallons of, of fuel, excuse me, of fuel, that tank goes under vacuum. The tanks operate anywhere from negative three to negative five PSI. The vents on the tanks actually allow air to come in instead of out if the vacuum gets above a certain threshold. It's a mechanical device. When the tanker's truck comes to drop fuel, tankers now have to do a vapor balance connection. They put a, a fuel hose to the, to the compartment that fills the tank, they put a vapor recovery hose also back to their truck. When they drop fuel into the, into the tank, vapors go back into the tanker truck. The tanker truck actually brings those vapors back to the terminal on Allen's Avenue in Providence. What fuel companies determined is, over time and over, over years, the vapor will actually recondensate inside the tanker truck and actually give them another, you know, couple ounces of fuel. But over time, that adds up. So the fueling companies realized that this not only was a good idea from the environment, environmental perspective, they also figured out that this was kind of good for their bottom line. So every system that gets installed by the DEM, by installed by a new gas station has to be approved by the Rhode Island DEM. It has to comply with CARB air emissions, it has to comply with all sensors in review. There's a gentleman at the state who does all the reviews, he makes sure that everything's compliant. He then comes out and inspects it several times during the course of the installation to make sure that the installer is installing it to the specification. That's one of, I guess, you know, the biggest thing, is it's not something that's done like the old days, you know, the cowboys and Indians and someone was flying around and, and throwing gas station equipment into the ground. These days, this is inspected rigorously by the state. The only state that doesn't really do inspections is Mass, but Mass is a separate animal. But that is, is basically the fuel system. There's been a few questions about, about the tanker truck and how the tanker truck would situate itself. If you could go to the next. There is a drawing that's been distributed that shows the tanker truck parked, oh, there it is, right here, it's in purple, I know, I, I was standing in the back a little while, and I know folks in the back can't really see this, but it is available through the town website. The tanker trucks, just as a matter of detail, tanker trucks load from the passenger side. So the tanker, in order to load these tanks as situated, would park in the strip of asphalt in between the, the island here... in between the island here and the dispensers to offload the fuel. Typically, what the tanker truck driver does is if they're offloading to, say, this compartment here, they block off this dispenser with cones so that customers don't park there. When they move to the one in the middle, they block this one off. These two would never really be impacted during drops. They do because that is, I've seen them do it.
I didn't say anything.
Okay, I just, I saw you, I saw you.
You're worrying about me, Donnie.
Oh, okay. No, no, I know, you're good.
Okay.
But that is what they do. That's what Noonan does. That is what Noonan's requirement is from us. J P Noonan is the third-party contracted hauler. There is no way for the tanker really to orient themselves any other way to drop. It just doesn't make sense. This is the in for the facility. This is the out. This is where the tanker drops. This location and this setup, from my perspective, having done countless of these with Seasons and with B J's Wholesale Club and others, this is probably a more ideal situation because I do have space for my tanker truck to sit here and offload and be sort of out of the way of the general flow. Traffic's coming in, traffic's going out, tanker truck's not blocking anything. There's a lot of very, you know, William Canning Boulevard got brought up. That's one that I got to remediate and build and oversee and they don't have nearly as much room as here on that one. This is a pretty decent setup. Any tanker truck driver will probably tell you the same. There are other gas stations in town that have significantly less room. In terms of public safety, I do know that from what I can see online, those gas stations are run very well. I don't see any violations. I don't see any reports of any issues. And if other gas stations can run their facilities well without issues that I can see, then this one with a lot more room would be able to do the same. That's basically what I have to say about, I guess, public health and safety in terms of the tank system.
Question.
Yes.
I have to correct you. All the station you look in town, they're all full service?
Yes.
So you cannot compare traffic flow and how we pay attention compared to your employees and management?
Absolutely.
That statement is totally wrong.
I'm sorry.
The stations in town are all full service. It does not apply to what you just said. It's totally wrong.
I would disagree that it's totally wrong. I would say, I would say that a full-service station has more control over customers than a self-service one. But in terms of the tanker truck coming and offloading fuel, the tanker comes and a full-service station is far more attentive in terms of helping, but I wouldn't say that I was wrong in what my statement was.
Mr. Simpson, your analysis is based on self-service, right?
Correct.
And you didn't do any analysis yet on full service?
Correct, I did not.
We'll do that.
We can do that.
His statement was, other stations in town have the same issue or we don't.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we'll have to revisit our analysis to compare.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All I was trying to do is say I understand that other gas stations do it very well and I don't, that's all I was saying. Yes.
I might be ahead of myself, but what about where the fuel pumps actually are and when people fuel, you know, they drip?
Yes.
Is there a collection system for that, that, you know, that gas would fall into the cement or how does that?
The only collection system is the state requires what they call positive limiting barriers, P L Bs. These are the grooves that you see in the concrete that go around. That is really it. The state will regulate if there's spills. So if a customer has a spill, typically the fire department responds and the state makes a determination if, what if any investigation needs to happen? Typically, if it's typical customer use, it's a drip here or there. It stays on the concrete. It doesn't migrate off the P L B, off of the concrete surface. It doesn't penetrate the concrete surface. The state will typically have you broom sweep and or power wash or whatever, depending on, it's really the emergency response decision at the state level.
So I have a question. So I'm going to take you back a little bit, something you said earlier, and I did make a face about it. You said your third-party driver, who's not monitored by anybody, closes those two pumps to be used by consumer, which is mean on your two pumps, that's four customers while he's delivering, right?
They do one at a time, yes.
Right, but four, two pumps, two hoses on each pump, front and back.
They do one compartment at a time, so the driver would do this compartment, close this dispenser only, these three stay open.
So what happened with the consumer? I don't have a pointer. The second pump down, who comes in off the road when I come around and dive in facing the truck? How does he get out?
They have to back out.
There's a cop behind them and the traffic and somebody parked in front of the store and people walking across? No one does that. I'll explain it, please.
Yeah. All I can tell you is the actual fuel drop takes about 15 minutes.
All right. So earlier in the planning, those tanks were on the other side.
Up this way, yes.
Right. Why were they moved?
This appeared to work better with traffic flow in and out and keep the tanker truck out of the drive area for the exit to.
So it's for profitability, not safety?
Actually, no, I would disagree. I would call this a safer setup than over here because I have less traffic coming across here than I do here.
So I'm not a traffic expert, but I guess I've done this a couple of times in my life. So you want to tell me a car coming in in the middle of the storm, I've always used to lose storm as an example because it goes nuts? You know what I mean? It's like the world's going to end? So everybody, they'd be lining up behind each other. So he closes one pump, the second one is open, and you want to tell me that driver is going to be able to back up safely compared to where you have left the tank where they were originally? And the only blocking issue would be your coffee drive-up, which is you could easily close it while you're delivering at the entrance, so we don't sell coffee until we're done delivering. Which one is safer?
I still maintain this is safer from an operational standpoint and it's less to do with coffee. This is the main exit for every car that comes in and out of that facility. And I'd rather have the traffic not really encounter the tanker truck than have the tanker truck over here. But that's my opinion and that, I mean, Seasons may have a different opinion and may agree with you over me. I don't know. It's something that I think, you know, can be discussed. But in my opinion, from having done this on many stations, I prefer this setup to the previous setup.
Okay.
I was happy to see the change, but that's just me.
I'm not.
My last item, and I think this might be, this might be the most exciting item, which is noise, light, and trash. I'm going to start with the easy one, trash. There was a question raised, I think by a resident, if I recall, at one of the last meetings, about trash and trash management and how does Seasons manage that? What I can tell you is Seasons is a Shell branded partner and they are graded as to the cleanliness of their stores. It is my personal opinion that I think there's less trash on a Seasons store than there are on, say, Cumberland Farms, generally speaking. That's what I see. I do know that from an operational standpoint, and I think operations folks can talk further about it, they are required to remove trash daily. They're inspected daily, they're inspected weekly, they're inspected monthly, and they're inspected quarterly. Seasons is graded by Shell as a retail partner. I can report to you that Seasons has routinely been the number-one retail partner of Shell in terms of their grading overall for their facilities for several years running, including last year. I do know that Andy and Sandy, the owners, take great pride in it. It was a source of conversation at their annual Christmas party that they have in Warwick that I attended and I was lucky enough to get an invite. And it is something that is very strong, it's strong to them and important to them. So in terms of trash, that is how Seasons runs trash. Obviously, it's not a cure-all. Any development here is going to have some potential to generate trash and no one wants to see that in a community. And you'd like to hope that as, as folks who are local to the community aren't going to be littering, sadly, I'd be remiss to say that that doesn't always happen, but it is in terms of development, something that is closely watched by Seasons' operations. The next thing I want to chat about is noise. There's been a lot of question about noise specifically related to any time Maria Menounos gets on the gas station TV and talks about the word of the day, the drive-through speaker system and ordering system, and what kind of sound profile does that show? Colbya Seasons has asked me to do sound studies for years on their properties. They've developed in pretty sensitive places, Newport, most recently Lexington, Mass. Lexington is anything in the town of, if not historically considerate and very concerned about residential abutters. I've done countless studies on, I think, any, every single site in Warwick because Warwick is Warwick and there's an airport there. What I can tell you is having done sound studies on the gas station TV, triggering them on and off all hours of the day, morning, noon, I've done it at midnight, I've done it in the rain, I've done it in the snow, I've done it in winter, I've done it in summer. The maximum reading that I've ever been able to collect on a decibel meter is about a 15-foot radius from the gas station TV display. I cannot detect it on any handheld instrument above 0.1 decibels, anywhere beyond 15 feet. If you think about it, that makes sense because if you're filling up, say, at this dispenser and someone's filling up at this dispenser, the advertisement starts up at a different time depending on when you trigger the nozzle. And what you don't want to have happen is you don't want to be hearing the word of the day here and the weather of the day here and not be able to understand either one. So the volume is set to be a radius around. The distance to the nearest residential receptor is significantly further than 15 feet. Based on all the studies I have done, it's not feasible for a nearby resident to hear that advertisement.
Do you have that feet number? What is the nearest residence based upon the current conditions? Do you have that from the?
It's more than 100.
More than 100 feet?
It is. I don't know the exact number. I know the exact number from the back here, it's about 200.
From the rear, it's 200?
About that.
And from the side, it's 100?
Or less or more. I mean, not less, more.
I have a question. Can you somehow guarantee that the delivery, the fuel delivery and your product delivery will not happen overnight?
The product delivery will not happen when the store is not open.
How about the fuel delivery?
I mean, the fuel delivery, that's what, I use the term product for fuel, sorry. The fuel delivery does not happen at night, unattended. The store has to be attended. Yeah, that is the corporate policy that Seasons has. Because the driver is required to pull the inventory off of the control unit and visually verify that the tank level in the tank matches what's on the Evo unit. That is their policy.
Do you have that policy?
I don't know if I have it written.
I would love to have it. The other question I have, about product delivery?
We'll submit that and also we can, the, both retail product and fuel product deliveries will only be during operating hours. And we're receptive to discussing restrictions on that. The intent is not to disturb.
I understand. I just wanted to point it out. Thank you.
And if I didn't, I apologize if I said it, I'm saying it again. We'll provide you the fuel delivery policies, written policies.
Thank you.
As well as the trash maintenance policies.
The next thing I wanted to talk about in terms of sound is there's been a lot of concerns. One of the special use permits is obviously a drive-through. And a drive-through has a speaker system and order system and a pickup window. The pickup window doesn't generate much sound because that's a customer actually collecting, you know, their bagel or coffee or whatever. But the order system in the speaker back from the cashier who's checking out to the customer ordering is an audible thing that's heard. I've measured this, again, day, night, all seasons, all times, extensively in Warwick in particular, but also Lexington, Hooks at New Hampshire, I can go on and on and on. The maximum distance that I've ever been able to detect sound, and that's a 0.01 decibel reading above background, is 90 feet from the speaker. I've not been able to detect it beyond 90 feet. This was particularly important because there's a resident behind one of the facilities in Warwick that is 95 feet away to the property line and 100 feet away to the building, to their house, and I wanted to be sure that that did not carry. No matter how many times I've replicated this study, I can't come beyond 90 feet. This area back here is just about 200 feet from the nearest house. So again, that's a significant distance more than what would be required to avoid sound. Sound is one of those things that's, what I find, what I have found, and this is sort of just an anecdote, the number-one cause of noise in a neighborhood tends not to be coffee shops and gas stations. It's really the speed limit on the road. If you have a speed limit of 40, the ambient sound is significantly higher in decibels than a speed limit of 30. I believe the speed limit here is 35. If you want to make the neighborhood quiet, quieter, lower it by five miles an hour. That's the, road noise, car noise is the number-one source of sound that I find, except in Warwick when a plane goes overhead. And then I'm going to get to light because everyone loves light. Can you pull the light one up, Cheryl? You folks have seen this. I think there was some discussion about having, I expect that this is going to be something that'll come back to be discussed again, you know, once we, once opposing counsel has seen it. This is the light map, the light heat map that has been generated. I do not generate the map, I want to be clear. This map and this image is generated by a company called L S I. They're the supplier of lights. They use their own software to model this. What I can speak to is Seasons has asked me in previous locations, especially light-sensitive locations like Lexington, to go and truth-check this with a light meter. They're showing foot candle readings, and foot candles is sort of an older-fashioned term, British term. Most people use the term lumens now. One foot candle is about 10.7 something lumens. They reported in foot candles. I have gone out to Lexington to truth-check this, other locations that are light-sensitive. What I am finding is that the L S I model over-predicts the amount of light. I would fully expect the actual light print to be lower. I found an over-prediction of a double on some of my light readings in Lexington. So I would expect the same here. Light's one of those things that, this is modeled based on very low humidity, clear, you know, night. Light levels in practice are affected by moonlight, by moisture in the air, by fog, by all sorts of, you know, ambience like that. What this does show, and you can't really see it, and I apologize for the size of it, but it does show, you know, 60-something foot candles underneath the dispenser. Those lights are designed to angle straight down. They're not designed to angle out. This revised heat map from comments on the last meeting includes the ID sign, it includes the band light and the Shell Pectin light. It includes all of the sign lights on the side of the building. But the long story short of it is light is not shown to trespass in any detectable lumens outside of this footprint, which means it does not extend beyond the street. In some towns, and I can speak to, again, Lexington because that's the most recent one, Lexington actually asked us to increase the light at their roadway because they wanted more light spillage on the road. This is not something that's desired here. Therefore, that is obviously not proposed. Every time that this is done, these light maps and the lights picked are refined. When we were doing this under COVID, we could not get most of the lights that we have now. Everything was backordered. We're now thankfully beyond that. Every iteration we do, we fine-tune the light a little bit more to try to prevent off-site luminescence to neighbors. And that's the bottom line on this.
I have a question. I have pointed out to council earlier that I, granted, this might not show, you have this map here, but I still have a problem for a neighbor from any side, that the man light I'm going to see every time I open my shades in the summer is the canopy light. They could name it 3D, they could turn a background lit, whatever you want to call it. And I, literally, for commercials Seasons have, I wrote every word the daughter has says or the customers, what they like. Not one of them says the canopy, the signs, outside, where can I park? All it said is the product and inside and all that stuff, right? And somehow, you think it's not a point for a neighborhood to be able to see the canopy lit. I personally have a problem with that. You're coming into a small town, if you're coming into the Cape, if you're going into Providence Town, if you're going into small town, which is, I consider different, a small town for me, okay? I don't want to see canopy lights. It would be unacceptable. When another location in town did it, I went nuts, but we didn't have it built an official at the time. Nothing in your commercials says I need a canopy light. Nothing in your commercials says I need a canopy light. Your neighbors doesn't have to see your canopy light. We all know it's Shell. We all know, we're going to know it's Shell. God, after all these meetings? Everybody in this country knows it's Shell. I don't need to know your canopy light, your neighbor doesn't have to. So I take this seriously. None of your commercial said your lighting outside is that important. You sold your product inside, so I would really consider the canopy situation. I appreciate these lights and neighbors and, you know, luminate light, literally doesn't mean a damn thing because you do these studies. You still could see the light when you look at the stage. That's a problem.
No, you've made that point and I think Rob. No, that's a valid point. I appreciate your point, absolutely. You can see it and whether or not that needs to be seen is up for discussion and is outside my purview. My job is to make sure that what gets installed actually truth-checks what got presented to you guys.
Thank you.
But that's basically the sum of what I wanted to talk about in terms of the special use permits about, you know, the three factors of public welfare in terms of cleaning up what's there, not being detrimental to public health and safety with the tank system that's being proposed, although I think there's some discussion about the location of the tanks. And then neighborhood nuisance in terms of lighting and sound and trash, and I think you raised some very good points about lighting.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions? Seeing none on the board, any member of the public have questions?
Cross-examination. Cross-examination.
Oh, sorry.
Of course.
I think the attorneys want to talk.
Before you cross, Mrs. Stolzman, I'm looking at his report that was, I think it's dated November 14th, 2020. I think he went beyond, I don't know if he's, there's anything in this current report that's been submitted related to what he just testified to. Is this report going to be updated or?
I.
I might have, I might not have the most recent.
No, no, so since questions regarding light, I don't, we might not have had the.
Light sound is not mentioned in his written report.
So we presented that in just his oral testimony.
Which is fine.
And we'll provide some operational reports and some supplemental.
Okay, well, we'll have the transcript, but I didn't know if you were attending to some supplemental report.
We'll probably provide as much information as we can to back that up. And if I may, before we're concluded with Mr. Simpson, the LSI study on the light, while we're talking about light, you didn't do that study, the light company.
Correct, the light company does.
In your experience, is that the customary and ordinary and customary manner in which engineers measure light?
It is, yes. That's very standard manufacturer-provided stuff.
Thank you.
Manufacturer-provided things, or stuff, I said actually technically.
I'm afraid that I should let the lawyers cross-examine the witness before you get a chance.
Okay, I thought I heard you say.
I did, I misspoke. Thank you.
I thought you were ready to go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Would like to go first on cross?
Behind you.
He's behind you.
Who's behind you?
He's there.
All right. Karen Benson, Mr. Simpson. Can you hear me, everyone?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'll try to go in chronological order, and you mentioned that this is a brownfield site, is that correct?
It's not officially called a brownfield. In my industry, I would refer to it as a brownfield because it's a residually impacted historical industrial property.
Okay, and you talked about the PFAS, the firefighting phones. Has the property been tested for those?
This property has not. As part of the process going forward, if this were to be approved, that is part of my standard test.
And you anticipate that they will be found, is that fair to say?
I don't anticipate it on this property, no, because firefighting was not performed as I can find from the history on this. Firefighting was performed on a tank way down by the water.
Okay, thank you. If PFAS were found, the remediation process would be what? Can you describe that for us?
Completely depends. If it's found in groundwater and it all, it all depends on the levels that are found. If it's found on groundwater, groundwater can be treated in situ in the ground with the injection of carbon. It adheres to carbon very quickly. And that's basically what EPA and what the ITRC, the International Remediation Group, recommends. If it's found in soil and it's above certain standards, it would have to be removed and be disposed. There's very few landfills that are accepting that right now, ones up in northern New Hampshire. But that's what would have to happen. Again, I do not expect it here. There's no evidence of a fire here. The fire that did happen, and there's graphic photos online that you can find showing like this big huge plume of smoke, that was, that was down somewhere not too far from the boathouse restaurant.
But it is also true that the PFAS contamination can be done through air contamination, through particulates, is that fair to say?
The data is really dicey on that. There are some agencies in Europe that feel that way. It has not really been replicated by EPA that's been found, so it's, I wouldn't venture a guess either way because it's such a new science.
Okay. I want to stay on the PFAS for a minute. It's, you suggested in your answers that it's a, it's a sort of a new field, a growing field in contamination.
About the last 10 years, yes.
Yes. And how would you describe the standards in the state of Rhode Island for remediating the PFAS?
Developing. Every state is redeveloping. Rhode Island is, tends to lag behind California, Mass. and New Jersey and New York. Rhode Island has an international, I mean, has a national work group. They're revising, they have groundwater standards, they're working on soil standards. Massachusetts, they're adopting some Massachusetts standards right now. Some DEM case managers are having me look and compare Rhode Island concentrations to the mass PFAS-6 standards and remediate under the mass rules, even though DEM has not promulgated their own. I mean, it all depends on what you find and what you report to the state and what they decide to require.
Okay, thank you. Now, you testified that you did some soil samples, I think you did borings.
I did, four.
You did four of them?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Now, if you were going to remediate for PFAS, you would do surface soil samples, is that fair to say?
I would do surface and subsurface depending, yeah.
Okay.
Again, I do not expect it here. It was way down the hill.
Would you also do soil samples, surface soil samples for other contaminants, heavy metals, VOCs, petroleum products, et cetera?
Yes.
All of those?
All of those. I did, the initial sampling I did recovered total petroleum hydrocarbons. I, oh, sorry, I'm rambling with my. Sorry. Yeah. The initial sampling I did included what DEM calls the total petroleum hydrocarbon along with VOCs, SVOCs, S, yeah, just SVOCs, metals, PCBs. Didn't find anything other than metals at background concentrations. There's, all soil has metals in it naturally, and the trick is to see if the concentrations are above or below background, and they were not above background. But that, it's sort of consistent with you, so this is a petroleum site. I haven't speciated the petroleum, I can't tell you if it's gasoline, diesel, kerosene, Jet A, number four, number six bunker, I cannot tell you that.
So let's translate for the public. You haven't characterized the petroleum wastes that are present on the site, correct?
Correct. I just know that there's a total petroleum number of about 190 micrograms per kilogram, which equates to parts per million. The state standard for it is presently 500. It's below the state standard, so at the moment, nothing requires further evaluation. But as part of the development, we can't remove any soil without further testing. We can't develop, Seasons can't hire me to develop it. They make sure that I take care of their soil for them, and that's something I would need to do for the characterization.
Okay, thank you. So the risks associated with the remediation be determined once you've done further testing, is that fair to say?
Correct.
You'd agree with that?
If there are any.
Okay. And so we really won't know vis-à-vis what'll happen in the community until you do further testing?
And this is applicable to any development here. Anyone who comes in to look at developing this property is going to do exactly what I did. They're going to come in, do a baseline study, put in three, four, five borings, see what kind of a, it's a first pass, like what are we dealing with here? Like, look at the site history, we don't know, this could be bad, this could be good. Find what it is, fine-tune that evaluation based on what gets approved. If, you know, I think Mr. Stolzman talked about a bank. If this were to be developed into a bank, a bank's going to come at it differently than I would looking at a gas station. And they're going to test different, they're going to test the same things but in different areas. So this all depends on, does this project move forward?
Thank you. You testified earlier on direct that the company, the applicant, has a history of acquiring such properties and redeveloping them.
Yes.
And you estimated based on your first preliminary findings that there'd be 2,000 to 5,000 tons of soil in the preliminary. I understand that we've now vetted that there's more to be done.
More to be done, yes.
Now, it's fair to say that when that's going on, the contaminated materials are stored on the site, right?
Not necessarily. And under construction, it is usually advantageous for me to pre-classify, grid the site to the degree that I need to for the areas, take the samples, have all the data back, get it pre-approved at a disposal facility and live-load it directly into trucks. And that's because when these things get developed, there's a lot of sequencing in terms of construction, and the faster I get out of the way, because I'm the environmental guy, no one likes the environmental guy. When, the faster I get out of the way, the better. If I can pre-classify a site and live-load it onto trucks as it's being excavated, that's ideal. And this site is advantageous to that because it's not being used. You know, if they were to buy, you know, they've bought, they bought a fireplace store once that they bought, they converted into a gas station. I couldn't drill and sample under the fireplace store until the construction started and the store went away. In this case, I have an open piece of land, I can characterize everything I need ahead of time and minimize or even eliminate any storage on site.
So when DEM gives you your permit to do the remediation, can that be a condition of the permit that you're going to live-load and not store any contaminated soil on site?
No, because DEM allows you to do either. It's acceptable either way, so they will not issue me, DEM isn't going to tell me to do one or the other. They can express or they can opine how their desire is. I can tell you that Seasons' desire is, would be for me to remove it as quickly as possible because then I'm in the way. A big pile, a big pile. I'm sorry. No, I was just going to say, a big pile of dirt's in the way of everybody.
But you could excavate and store until you.
That is allowed under the regulation.
Because your facility where you're going to ship it to has to be ready to accept the soil, and it could be more than 2,000 to 5,000 tons, and it might be difficult to get trucks, et cetera. In which case, the excavated soil, contaminated excavated soil would be sitting on the site under a tarp.
Under, under plastic, correct. That's required by the regulation, yeah. As opposed to sitting in the ground. Yes.
Now, you could do other things with remediation. There are other options to excavating, isn't that fair to say? You could cap it.
Oh, yeah.
And you said you could build a storage facility there.
Yes.
And that capping process would be an acceptable method of containing whatever contaminants are there, perhaps?
Perhaps. Except that it doesn't remove the contaminant from the environment. And that's why I don't, I personally, as an environmental professional, would rather recycle, reuse and get rid of the material and get rid of the molecules of contaminant as opposed to capping, because capping, it's always there, it's there for all time. You always have to worry about unleaching into the groundwater. Removal is always better than capping, in my mind, is my opinion.
Let's just explore capping a little, little more. You could cap and put a restriction on the site as to how the development might be carried out in the future. Again, that would protect the public health and welfare.
Not as much, I would still opine, not as much as removing it, because removing it again gets rid of it, capping it leaves it there.
Okay, but capping and a deed restriction combined would be an option to protect the public health and welfare, you'd agree with that?
Yes, if DEM, if it went under a remediation order and DEM accepted it. DEM may not accept that. They, DEM does not like caps and deed restrictions very much because it creates, every year you have to inspect the cap and you have to send a report to the state. And the state, you know, it's more work for the state, and removal and clean ending is always more desirable.
So we've covered two other options. You could cap it and contain it and still develop the property. We agree that's one option. And then we just talked about some other, whether DEM likes them or not. And I want to get back to what permits are going to be required in a minute. And then I wanted to explore what you mentioned about groundwater contamination. So you've done soil borings, but have you done groundwater sampling?
Not yet.
Okay. So again, that's an unknown at the moment.
And that would be something that has to happen prior to development.
Okay. And given the location, do you anticipate that there might be groundwater contamination given that the surrounding uses historically were commercial, industrial, petroleum, et cetera?
In my opinion, I would not expect the groundwater to be completely clean at background. I would expect total petroleum hydrocarbons in groundwater. I would expect those concentrations to be below DEM standards because the soil concentrations were also below DEM standards, and the groundwater contamination would have to be sourced from the soil.
Do you know the depth to groundwater right now?
It's about eight to 10 feet.
So it is possible that excavating the site could further exacerbate groundwater contamination, fair to say?
I would disagree with that because if this project were to be approved, the tanks sit deeper than that and they need to be excavated out. And part of the issue here is if you're dealing with pumped water and you're dealing with anything that's detected in groundwater, even if it's below DEM standards, the DEM regulates pumping and discharge of that water. What they call a RIPDES RGP needs to be prepared, you have to get a permit, the water needs to be treated, it needs to be discharged to a suitable location, and has to be tested effectively to drinking water standards before it's released. So whenever, whenever Seasons builds a gas station, not only do we have the opportunity to remove contaminated soil, we also have the ability to remove contaminated groundwater if it's there. The DEM does regulate naturally occurring metals in groundwater at concentrations lower than what they are found, so sometimes you have to do metals treatment. Just one of those things, it's so weird.
That sounds good. Thank you. Let's stay with the groundwater permit. It's called a RIPDES permit, R-I-P-D-E-S.
Yep. And then they added on remedial general permit or RGP.
So tell us briefly, why do we need, why do you need the RIPDES permit?
To install the underground storage tanks. We anticipate the bottom of the tanks or the excavation to go into groundwater, and in order to keep the excavation dry enough to work and to be safe for the workers to actually put the tanks in the ground, the water would need to be removed.
So that permit is a temporary one for construction only?
Correct.
Okay. Then you have an environmental, Department of Environmental Management, preliminary determination, do you have that yet?
For the tanks or for stormwater?
You know, I can't tell from this report, I think you might need both.
There's definitely one required for stormwater, that's handled by the Site Civil folks and outside of my jurisdiction. I do need a permit that Colbyo or Seasons would have me obtain for the tank installation. The Office of Underground Storage Tanks regulates them. We don't even have technical engineer drawings yet for the tanks. As one board member has noted, maybe there's some flux in the location of the tanks. So those haven't been put to paper, those need to go to the DEM to get approval, takes about 30 days and DEM approves them, unless they disagree with something.
When you did your soil samples, the borings, was there rock, bedrock or other evidence of fill material? Was there anything other than soil when you did your borings?
The top few feet appeared to be fill. I did not hit bedrock. I did not advance deep enough. I advanced to the water table, I took my samples and I stopped because that was my scope of work. At that, obviously before, whatever decision is made on the tank location, if this project were to move forward, a deeper boring would be advanced because we'd like to know ahead of time if bedrock's in the way.
Okay, thank you. And then there's the UST Underground Storage Tank Permit. Again, you don't have that yet.
No.
Because they may need to be moved. But you do have the construction materials, fair to say?
I have the, I'm sorry.
You know, you were talking about the double-wall tanks and the.
Those, those all have to be ordered about a year in advance. I have not ordered a set of tanks or lines or piping or anything for this project yet.
Because as they're designed, they're not yet approved.
Well, correct.
Okay.
And the project would need approvals from this board and others before that we get to that point.
I'm focusing on DEM right now.
Oh, sure.
Yeah. Okay. Do you know whether the facility is going to allow the filling of portable gas tanks? You know, for your boat and your ga, or, you know, your yard equipment, et cetera?
I don't know off the top, because that's not really... Once DEM issues a permit to dispense fuel, it's a permit to dispense fuel. If there's an operational decision to not allow that, that's, that's other people's world. It wouldn't be regulated. If the DEM approves it as a gas station, they approve it as a gas station.
I wanna move away from the environmental permitting side and go back to what you said about noise. I have a couple of questions about that. You used some language that I hope you can help me understand. You talked about the TV screens, a 15-foot radius. But what about other noise? You couldn't have tested for that, that's gonna be built into this kind of a commercial operation, like horns hawking, or EMTs responding, or truck doors slamming, or... Did you take into consideration any of that noise pollution?
Not in the studies. The studies that have been done have been focused on what is the noise pollution that comes from this, this advertisement? What is the noise pollution that comes from, you know, this speaker system? Things like EMTs, trucks, as I mentioned earlier, traffic is roadway traffic, existing roadway traffic. Traffic count, traffic speed, is the number-one factor in ambient background. So if I took a decibel meter right now, there's gonna be ambient noise as people shuffling papers, or someone's gonna sneeze, that's all gonna be detected. If an, if an ambulance or a fire truck or a police car went, went by with a siren blaring, that's going to be something that's not specific to the gas station. That's just the neighborhood.
Is it just the neighborhood, though? If the rest of the neighborhood is residential, and now we're adding these elements? I mean, isn't noise cumulative?
Noise is cumulative, but the entire street heading, heading north towards Fall River is commercial. There's other gas stations, there's a, there's a pharmacy, there's an auto body shop, there's a gym. I do know where the gym is. I walked all the way up the street. So, plus I used to drive by here when I was a kid.
But you don't disagree that horns hawking, truck doors slamming, you know, people hailing each other in, in the front of the gas station, would combine with the mechanical operations? The drive-up window, the little screens on the TV, to make a cumulative background noise that you haven't tested for, fair to say?
Correct. That's fair to say. I, I would say that that would be applicable to any commercial development. It is a commercially zoned property, and I can think of a myriad of other uses that might be allowed that would be significantly louder. So I don't know.
But you also agree that this one could contribute to ambient noise in the neighborhood?
Anytime you have people, you have noise.
Okay.
And it's, it's, is it regulated? Does the community, you know, they're enforcing certain hours of operation, that clears the property out? There's a variety. If, if there's somebody that, that decides to go down schooner with their, with their stereo blasting, someone could call the police on, on that individual. It's, it's really hard to control and factor that in.
But you wouldn't dispute that this is going to have traffic on-site? And to your point of music, so I'm gonna pull up, and I got my favorite song blaring, and, you know, it doesn't bother me that there's a neighbor a few hundred feet away. I'm getting my coffee in the summer, cruising along. That's, that's gonna be part of what this operation will look like.
Yes.
You said it yourself.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I would also further that by saying, if it's developed as a bank, if it's developed as a gym, if it's developed as an auto body shop, all of these things are gonna have the same issues. So it's not really germane in my mind, and I don't wanna step on Mr. Pimentel's shoes, but it's not really germane to me from a noise perspective as, as a reason to deny a special permit for it, simply because the facility as a commercial facility is going to attract customers, 'cause all commercial facilities would.
I understand. I just wanted to get at the scope of your conclusions and the basis for some of your opinions, to see what you took into consideration. You're an environmental engineer.
A geologist, per se, by training.
Okay.
We, we draw a distinction.
And it's a good one.
Yeah.
It's a good one, for this project in particular.
Yes.
But do you know, or if I were to suggest to you that there could be some habitat value to the lot, would you agree or disagree with that?
I would disagree with that.
You'd disagree with that?
I would, yes.
Did you make any observations as to wildlife habitat at all while you were there?
No, that was not part of my scope.
No. So it's possible that birds are nesting there, fair to say?
I, I couldn't speak either way.
And it's possible, because, you know, it's just wooded, brambles, untouched at the moment, right? All overgrown.
It's all overgrown, yes. I, I can't speak to, to basically what's living there, because I didn't, that was not part of my study.
So it might be possible that the facility, the one and a half acres, especially because it abuts a wetland, could have habitat value, fair to say? It could.
I can't speak either way. I, I really can't. I, given the history of it, I'm skeptical, put it that way.
I'm gonna reserve the right to cross on the lighting. I just wanna be sure that I understand what we were referring to today. Apart from that lighting drawing, which I know that's new.
That's new, yeah.
Yep. Was everything else that you testified from today included in your original report?
I had two reports, and I wanted to clarify with, with Rob. I had a light and sound letter, and then I had a separate environmental letter of support. It's become clear to me that the environmental review has clearly been reviewed. I'm not sure if everyone's taken in the other one. They were generated about a week apart back in November.
Okay. Great, thank you. Just let me have one moment?
But none, none of that is new, per se.
Okay. But the, the light study?
The light study is new.
That's all new?
That is new.
Okay.
And I suppose my testimony about the trash is new, because that arose out of a question at one of the last hearings.
Can I ask a question?
Hmm.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
In your mind, do you will end up leaving wells for Phase One or anything? Do you expect to continue monitoring the situation on that property after it's done?
No. If, if nothing is found that requires further involvement with the DEM, and, and I have subsequent samples that prove that, I would abandon the wells, because the DEM views monitoring wells as potential avenues for future impact from the surface, so those get abandoned at the end. If by some chance something is found, and the DEM issues an order to, say, perform quarterly groundwater sampling, then obviously the wells stay, until which time the DEM...
So you don't expect them to...
Yeah. I don't expect it.
I have a second question, which is go back to the lighting. I've been struggling lately watching all these stations, turning everything LED on their pricing. All other states have different regulation for what, how many prices you need to post. Rhode Island is very clear. You need it just in two places. The problem, some of these newer stations would be including Seasons. When they shut down at night, these pumps lights on top stays on.
Yeah.
Lot of their LED pricing on the street stays on. I have a struggle with that, but I, it's hard to enforce, hard to, you know, I called the state, said, "Why are we allowing these people to have the lights on?" Do you find that necessary in your station? Would you agree to the fact Rhode Island only require pricing in two places? It will be your monument sign and your pump itself, well, the people pumping. I struggle to reason that we need an LED right on top. They already pulled in. They already saw your price.
Yeah.
They're already pumping the gas. Why do I have to leave this LED pricing on top of the pumps all night? I don't know if you're, you're returning here writing it down. I prefer these signs on top of the pumps to not exist. They're not required by law.
Yeah.
Shell should not be able to enforce it. They're not required. And you have two places to put them. And you have no way to shut them off. So at night, the neighbor's gonna see, these LEDs will be brighter than ever, because everything else is around them, dark. So I prefer these on top of the pumps don't exist. They're not required.
I, I totally understand your point. I, I think it's a very good point, and I, I would defer to others. I can only speak to how much light it produces when everything's on.
It is true. It's only required in two places, so, thank you. Sorry.
How many times did you go to the site to do the work that formed the basis of your report and opinion?
Four or five times separately, and I've, since then I've been another five or six.
Okay. And just to get back to the conditions on the site, I understand from the summary that it was abandoned back in the 1990s.
Or late 80s, early 90s, yeah.
So it's been left to re-vegetate and in its natural state for some, for decades, fair to say?
Yep.
And how would you describe the, 'cause, you know, we can't get in there, at least I can't. When you go in from, from the road, how would you describe it?
There, there's a decent amount of vegetation sort of around the exterior of the property. And when you get into the middle of it, there's less vegetation. And, you know, I think the soil quality is poor. You had asked a question about fill, and I'm surmising a little, but I'm not sure that it's particularly good. It's not topsoil, so I think seeds have a hard time germinating on it. I did...
Might be contaminated.
Well, I don't know. I, you know, I have...
Things aren't germinated.
I have four thing, I have four borings. I also know that there's, you know, fill, that there's a lot of sort of crushed concrete and, and that sort of thing from the old developments in the shallow soil. And that doesn't go so well for growing either.
And to get to the, the member's question about the Phase One, are there any, is there any other evidence of other, like dumping, you know, oil disposal, trash, those things that would be obvious in a Phase One?
No. There's no, I, I was actually surprised. There's no burms, there's no little strange pits or holes, or... You know, you look for these sorts of things on, on developed property, or, you know, formerly developed properties of, you know, oddness. This is nothing that I've seen.
Thank you. Just a couple more questions about the status of permitting. I'm not sure if you are responsible for, but there does seem to be a need for a post-construction best management practice as water treatment. Is that you, or is that engineering?
That's engineering.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not sure if the property meets the size threshold or not. I know there is one, but I can't really speak to it, 'cause I'm not usually... That's definitely an engineering thing and less of a geology thing.
Then I think, subject to the light and maybe some other questions, I'm done. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. DeVito?
Mr. Simpson, my name is Mr. Christopher DeVito. I represent one of the neighbors.
Yes.
So I, and I apologize, I haven't had a chance to look at your resume. But you've indicated that you have a degree in geology?
Correct.
Hydrogeology or geology?
Specific, fluvial geomorphology and hydrogeology.
Okay, so geomorphology and hydro, hydrogeology. You're not a civil engineer, though, right?
No.
So, are you an acoustic engineer?
I have one on staff, but I am not.
Okay, so, just starting off with, with, with noise, I guess, 'cause we're here. You talk about these studies. Did you produce any of these studies that you referenced?
All of the noise studies I produced myself, with my staff. We were retained by Seasons to go out and do them. Have also been retained by the Army, Air Force, Air Force Reserve, and Army Corps of Engineers.
So those, those reports you referred to in your testimony are in your, been submitted for review by...
In the, the light and sound review letter. They were summarized. They, I did not submit reports of other locations to the board. I summarized the findings of similar locations in a letter to them.
But those underlying reports that you summarized, is it possible that we can have them?
I, some of them you cannot, because they're government property, and I would need permission from the Air Force.
Other sites that you've done?
I would, I would need permission from clients.
Okay.
They're, they're produced solely under contract to clients, and I cannot release them without client approval.
So help me if I understand this, is that you, you, you're making a statement about what the noise impacts would be or not on this project, and you're extrapolating to other studies?
Correct. Of similar projects. In, in specific, I'm using retail gas stations, primarily Seasons, but, but other retail gas stations as well.
So that's your staff. You have acoustic engineers on staff?
Correct.
And so there's no way for me or my experts to independently verify the methodology and the results of those other reports that you've used to extrapolate to, to opine here today?
Other than my sworn-in testimony.
Well, you didn't do the reports, so...
I, most of the reports I physically wrote or I reviewed them as the owner of the company.
Right, but what I mean to say is, is that, that the people who conducted these other reports, they're not here giving sworn testimony?
Correct.
Okay.
But I, they are my employees and I represent them.
Understood. But I'm not able to now cross-examine you on the content of that, because I guess I haven't seen those reports, 'cause you can't produce them. And you might not be able to answer the questions, because it's confidential, privileged reports.
Certainly the government ones, yeah.
Sure. So you talk about ambient, background ambient noise. So it could be like a plane going overhead, train.
Yep.
Maybe even a lawnmower, or traffic. Is that noise different than noise, content-based noise?
I'm not sure I'm following. Content-based meaning?
Well, that might have a drumbeat, that might have words, that might have a rhythm.
I suppose if you have a, a sound meter and you bang on a drum like this, that has a certain decibel reading. If I speak, if I speak louder, that has a louder decibel reading.
No, I guess what I'm trying to maybe, maybe answer, if I have two sounds registering at the same decibel. One is road traffic, and one is a conversation. Is there a difference in terms of the receiver, how that person is impacted from that same decibel level noise?
It, it depends on the individual. Some individuals are more susceptible to high noises, some to less. A, a thumping bass, you're gonna sort of feel in your diaphragm?
No, I'm not talking about louder or higher. Let me qualify the question again. You've got traffic at 35 decibels, and you've got a conversation at 35 decibels. I'm asking you, based on your supervision of acoustic engineers, whether there is a difference in terms of the impact on the receiver from white noise versus noise with content?
I would say yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
So, you could have road traffic at 30 dB decibels.
I'm more like 60, but...
Okay. I, I'm just going on, okay? 35 dBs. And you can have conversational noise at 5 dBs, and that actually might stand out more to the receiver than the, than the white noise in the background.
In, in your example, the difference between, say, 60 decibels of a traffic and 5 decibels of a, of a conversation, you would never hear the conversation.
Well, I didn't say 60.
No, 30.
Okay. Now, are you sure that you would never hear that?
Not, not at that. So, sound is logarithmic, right? So, 10 deci, semi-log, so 10-decibel increase is a double in, in the sound, right? So if you're talking a 30-decibel change, that's six times as loud. You're not gonna hear something six times quieter. You're just not. If it was closer together, you may, yes.
And, and you're basing that opinion on what?
That's just science.
But, but you're not an acoustic engineer to make that opinion.
Except that I, I employ one, and I've overseen them for 20 years. And I've been retained by the Air Force, the Air Force, Air National Guard, the Rhode Island Air National Guard, the Army Corps of Engineers, the United States Navy, U-Haul, BJ's, Seasons Corner Market. I can go on, yeah.
So, Madam Chair, I'm not sure if this witness has the requisite, is it, skill sets, profession certifications to opine on noise. He's a hydrogeologist. He can, he can opine on that, but he's, he's, he's making an opinion...
I think it goes to weight, doesn't, doesn't it?
Well, so, he's not been certified, he's not accepted as an expert in noise. That's all I wanna, want to clarify.
I don't know if he was over as an expert in noise.
All envi, we, we offered him as an expert in all environmental conditions. I'm happy to redirect on his methodology. When, Mr. Simpson went into great length...
Mr. Simpson went at great length to describe how he physically took these tests and studies at other Seasons markets, and that's the purpose of the comparison. Thank you.
Well, wait a minute, I think Mr. Stolzman misqualified it. He didn't do the test.
I did some of the tests.
Some of the tests.
Mm-hmm.
You might have, you might have held the meter, right? But your acoustic engineer, the ones that took that data, ran it through the models and produced the reports.
Yes.
Okay. No differently than you might have a civil engineer on staff, right? But you wouldn't necessarily be qualified to testify about the structural strength of the canopy.
Correct.
Okay.
I, I mean, it applies in law too, you know, if, if you're a specialist in environmental law and you get asked for constitutional law, you may have a attorney in your firm to speak to that. You wouldn't specify yourself as an expert in con law, but you're relying on the testimony of others that work with you.
Yeah, so we can't, we can't hold ourselves out as, as specialists. That's something that we're not allowed to do as attorneys.
Yeah.
Number one. Number two, I would not get out over my skis on a subject matter, for example, estate planning or taxation. Because that's not my sample.
Exactly, yeah.
Right?
Okay.
Even though I might have people in my office who have that specialty, I'd have them here to do the questioning and presenting that information. So. You said that all commercial, any commercial use is gonna generate noise.
Correct, in my opinion.
In your opinion. But not all commercial noise is equal?
Agreed.
So I imagine at the gym up the street, which you're familiar with.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure what the kind of noise that's being generated from a parking lot in a gym, but it's probably minimal.
I would agree.
Okay. Now, I just want, let's go back to the, the soil. And then thankfully, these stinky marshmallows are gone.
Thankfully, yes, that's what I called them, yeah.
And of course, that's been redeveloped as, as housing.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I know you said, well, I'm not sure if they tested. I can't imagine that they, they didn't test.
I wouldn't know because the DEM regulations were coming out right when that was developed. And back in the early 2000s, things were a little wild. And I would not necessarily opine either way. If the regulations had been in place and enforced, yes. Uh, there's a house across Souza that was built much more recently. Um, that one, I'm sure. Anything older, I don't know.
Yeah. Well, I'm not gonna testify, but I was an environmental scientist at the Department of Environmental Management.
I heard that, yes.
For seven years.
So you would know.
Yeah, and, and so, so, and I represent clients who are buying properties such as your, as your client has purchased.
Yeah.
So, uh, I, I would venture to say that there were standards, the site remediation, uh, regulations were, or their predecessors and inter- predecessors were at least in existence. But nonetheless, that was redeveloped as housing.
Yes.
Um, which, um, is somewhat consistent with the surrounding. Well, in fact, it is consistent with all the surrounding use to that housing. Yes, I do, and I'm getting to it.
Could you, could you ask it?
Well, I, I am.
I, I said, do you have a question?
Yeah.
Could you get to it?
Getting to it, so, so this property could be redeveloped for housing, correct?
If it's tested thoroughly enough.
Okay, so I wanna get to the testing. How deep did your borings go?
10, 10, 12 feet.
10, 12 feet.
Mm-hmm.
Now, who owns the property now?
Colbia does.
Colbia?
Yes.
So they acquired this property not knowing their potential liability or exposure to contaminants in the ground?
I do not know if they hired someone before me. I can only speak to that they hired me in 2021 to look at it. They acquired it before 2021.
Okay, so you haven't, you didn't ask if they had any other, um, soil or any other engineering analysis on this, uh, excuse me, soil analysis on this property?
I was told that another consultant may have looked at it on behalf of a previous buyer and/or owner, and that's all I know.
Okay. So there could be light or dense non-aquous phase liquid down above the groundwater or below the, or in the groundwater, correct?
Light potentially, I would be surprised if there was dense because I don't see a history use that would promulgate a, a Dean Apple.
So Colbia could have purchased, has purchased this property and could be exposed to some significant remediation cost?
If, if I find something that subjects them to that, yes.
Okay, so, but so far, what you have found, based on the four borings, so you, you gotta, you know what the historical use is?
Yep.
Uh, you're doing four borings and based on what you've indicated, and I think this is probably why you're proceeding forward with the project, is that what you've detected is below the standard that DEM says you need to, or reporting standards, correct?
Uh, Colbia doesn't generally base it on a threshold to reporting standards. It's, it was not contaminated bad enough for them to be concerned.
Right, meaning that, that what you've detected doesn't require you to report it to the DEM and, and conduct a site investigation report.
Correct, but Colbia has, to be clear, purchased properties that, that they have hired me to go investigate. I have found reporting conditions, they have been reported to the applicable state and, and they have proceeded.
Correct, well, that's good, and I, and I'm thankful that Colbia has that ethos. But you're talking about it's always good to clean up, like, like there's some benefit that you're conferring to the community when in fact you're saying it's not really much higher than background, uh, levels. Uh, it doesn't need to be reported to DEM, in fact, doesn't need to be cleaned up. So what real favor are you doing to the community or, or, to, by cleaning it up? If it doesn't need to be cleaned up?
I, I guess this is a philosophy question. Is any, so I think a lot of times people misunderstand, uh, the world of, of remediation and contamination. And they think just black and white, contaminated, not contaminated. In the real world, it's not like that. It's, it's, anything that humans have touched, odds are, is somewhat, I use the term impacted, which is sort of a, a less jarring word than, than contaminated. But how much is it? Is it above background but below cleanup standards? Is it above cleanup standards? If so, which one? It's all, it's all a gradation. And your philosophy is, you're correct, if, there's presently no requirement to do anything with the DEM based on the four borings I did. Absolutely true. If you're okay with that and the community is okay with that, and the community wants to cap it, leave it, that's fine. In my perspective, removal of, of contaminants, even if they're below the DEM standards, is always better than leaving it there. It's a philosophy thing, and that's my opinion. But I think a lot of people don't agree with it. But I look at a development like this that's gonna remove more soil that has low-level petroleum in it as an advantage to leaving it there.
So you said that you detected TPH, total petroleum hydrocarbon?
Yep.
At like 1?
190-ish.
190? And 500 is, is the reporting limit?
Correct.
Okay, so, and, and there might be, relatively speaking, that's not very high, 190?
No, I suppose, I mean, a little less than half of the standard.
Now, in order to construct this, this site, you're gonna have to remove soil anyhow.
Yes.
Right, because you've gotta take the soil out.
Yeah.
You've gotta put in suitable material, compact it and all that kinda stuff.
It's, it's a net export, yes.
Right.
Yep.
So you're taking out soil, no matter how you slice it?
Correct.
And you're taking out soil that may not need to be taken out for, for pollution purp- or regulatory reasons?
Absolutely, yes.
All right.
Well, what my point earlier was, was that a retail gas station removes more soil than, than a, a self-storage unit, which is the, the one that I had referred to earlier.
Sure, understood. Um, now, just, I guess, wanna get to the, the trash. You said that Campbell, uh, Seasons does a better job than Campbell.
I probably shouldn't have said that, but yes, I, I firmly believe that.
But that doesn't mean.
Is, is this on TV?
That's okay.
There's gonna be a hits squad on me now.
Um, but that doesn't translate to no problem?
I, I don't think any development translates to no problem.
Okay.
I, I would even argue that undevelopment, especially in this circumstance where the interior of the property is somewhat shielded from the neighbors, could also be a problem because you don't know if people are, are using it as a hangout. I don't know that.
Sure, but this operation, a convenience store and a drive-thru, has the ability to generate trash. For example, right? Cigarette wrappings, candy wrappings, uh, the, the, the bag you get your donut in, coffee cups and all that kinda stuff. Now, whether or not the site is well-maintained, because that's Colbia's ethos.
Yep.
We know that people often toss their trash, not necessarily on site, but as they go down the road.
Correct.
Okay, so there will be some effect. Because just naturally, you're creating more trash and there's gonna, it ends up not being contained in people's cars where it's supposed to be, right?
I, any development is gonna have that potential problem, yes.
The gym up the street?
Same thing, people are drinking sports water bottles, they're finishing them on their elliptical machine, they get in the car. It's not a nice person, maybe they don't live in Tiverton or Little Compton, they throw it out the window.
Ah, and that's a good point. Because when you live in a community, you're less likely to litter.
Yeah.
This is serving a regional need. So all those people coming in from Mass, New Hampshire, wherever, all those, those foreigners, they don't care about Tiverton, right?
Well, I, I, I don't know how to respond to that.
Fifteen minutes left, you really wanna go down this road?
Well.
I, I am not a fan of litter.
Madam Chair, I'm probing the issue of litter.
No, you're not probing any issue.
Well, he just said that people who, 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 who don't live in the community don't care so much about litter. So we are gonna have more litter, particularly from people who are regional. It's a fair point to put on the record.
I would disagree.
Okay.
Because I don't know that for a fact.
Okay. Well, I'm just taking your testimony. The people that don't live in the community might just throw their stuff out because they don't care, okay?
I, I have a, I, I like this area because I spent a lot of time as a kid around here. So I, I'm a little partial to the area.
Um, the thing with the planometric plan, I know that you didn't design it, right?
Correct.
Uh, help me remind me, you, you, you were saying that, you talked about lumens, light candles, yeah?
Foot candles, yes.
So foot candles. So how close would a veh- operator of a vehicle need to be to know that there's a gas station there? Like if I'm, it's at nighttime, I'm driving north, south on South Maine. South on, 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 on Maine, Maine, east, is it, what, East Maine, right? West, West Maine, just, I'm driving south of Maine, yeah? How far away will I be able to see at night that there's a Shell station there?
You're gonna be able to see it from line of sight because you can see the light. It's not gonna actually illuminate, going back to the piece of paper in the, in your hand. It's not gonna illuminate that piece of paper, but from a distance, you're gonna see it. So anything that's, that's lit, externally lit, from a distance, you will see.
How far do you know?
I don't know off the top of my head, no.
Um.
I think the factor of the road curvature means more to that question than, than an actual distance.
So the planometric plan is a little bit deceiving, right? Because it's saying, hey, over here, you're not gonna be able to show a piece of paper where the light's gonna be shined on it. But anybody who lives across the street and around that area will see it, probably a football field away if they can see it. 300 feet.
I, I would disagree that the planometric plan is misleading because that is really the only way that, that government has really regulated light. It's the only way it really can. Because you can see, you know, this gets into, into a discussion of, of how many nits are being produced? How, how, how much is that point source at the source producing? And how far can you see it? Which is a lot different than how much, you know, light pollution, I guess is the word. And so governments have chosen to regulate light pollution in terms of lumens in light, in terms of light spillage off property, which can be measured and can be forecast. Um, the rest of it, it gets very difficult to, to regulate, it's very difficult to ascertain.
So is it possible then, if you don't know how far away it is or what it's, is it possible to generate a nighttime rendering of what this facility would look like? For example, to the people who live directly across the street next to it?
I, I think absolutely.
Right, because we, we've already seen one rendering.
Yep.
Right, daytime with the trees. Um, so may, maybe that would be helpful so that way everyone, the board, will know what the view shed will be from this, from the neighboring, uh, uh, from the neighbors, if you will.
I, that's something I defer to.
Well, I mean, you're.
Oh, it physically can be done, yes.
Yes, well, I mean, in, in addition to the planometric, because I've asked you that question, you said you don't know.
In terms of, well, you were asking me distance, how far, if I'm coming down the street, when am I gonna see it? And I'm trying to think, well, there's a curve in the road there and there's a billboard on the side, I don't know.
Sure, well, I guess that's what I'm trying to understand. You're the light guy.
Hmm.
And I'm trying to understand what it will look like to people at night, whether they're driving down the road or sitting in their house. And I'm saying, I'm asking you, is the best way to answer that question, because you're the light guy?
Yeah.
Is to produce a nighttime rendering?
I think that, yeah.
That, that would, that would help you answer that question, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
If I, if I may, um, we've tried to respond and we will continue to try to respond to every single question. We're, as you could tell, we were doing a little discussion on nighttime renderings and trying to capture real, real light view and that, there's a little bit more of a science to that at night, so we're gonna look into that. That's not, we're, we're.
I mean, you, you could, I mean, again, it wasn't a requirement of the application.
Right.
You can, you can certainly, we will welcome that. The applicant, the, the objectors also have the ability to get a nighttime rendering to us if they need to. We will base the decision based upon what the evidence is presented to us.
Understood.
This is open to all parties.
We're, we're, we're just trying to continue in the effort of ongoing cooperation, providing informations as the applicant. That's, that's my point. If, if I may, uh, may I ask one, one question and redirect and then we're, we're here at the board's pleasures, yeah? On the, the sound studies that you've done, and we're, we're gonna provide some, uh, some, um, more data on that obviously. But you, you, you use a hand meter?
Correct.
All right, and is, is that pretty standard in the industry?
Yes.
And, and then you, you take, and it reads noise? And you've done this?
Yes.
You personally?
Personally, yes.
And you read it?
No one wants to do it at midnight, so I end up doing it at midnight.
And, and, and it gives you a reading?
Mm-hmm.
All right, and is there any special training particular to using these meters?
Other than being instructed how to do it by people who have the proper degrees and being overseen, then no.
And is it ordinary and customary for engineering firms like yours to have acoustic people on staff and you oversee them?
Correct.
So there's no real rocket science?
No, I, I mean, I have a GIS professional, I have a toxicologist on staff. Um, I have a variety of disciplines. I'm licensed to represent all of that.
Okay, good, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm sure that many of you might have questions of this witness, but it's, uh, quitting time. So can, will you be available at our next meeting?
I will make myself available. My, my children wanted to know what I was doing.
How many people here might have questions of this witness? Okay, I appreciate it because I'm tired. Okay, um, if you could become for our next meeting, that'd be great.
So this needs to be continued to March 6th? Well, this needs to be continued to March 6th, which will be our next regular zoning board meeting. Um, I know for a fact that, uh, there's only, um, one minor thing on, it was a carryover. I don't know if you'll be available, I don't know if this room would be available on March 6th unless you wanna try to have another special meeting.
If I may suggest, the special meeting process works well through a large group of witnesses. And, and if you continue to March 6th, we can again provide dates. We understand you're a volunteer board and all that, so we'll meet whenever it comes to be.
Right.
I can, I, if I have an opportunity to assure everybody's here, it gives us more real time.
Right, so we'll, we'll, the board will have to take a motion to continue this matter to March?
Do you have a question in the special meeting?
Well. I'm sorry, I don't have a good. It's hard, believe me, it's hard for me, I, you know? But we're, we're trying to give everybody the opportunity to be heard and to come back. I mean, I, I can, you can only do, it's, we could either do it like a lot of different times, a lot of different days, or try to make the, the meetings longer, so. I mean, I agree with you, I'm, I'm, I've reached maximum density, so.
I would join, uh, on behalf of the conservative to my brother's suggestion that it's more efficient given a number of special, I mean, expert witnesses to have a special meeting if the board doesn't feel that we're asking too much. I think it's more efficient.
Well, I, I think it probably is too, um.
So formally, we're gonna continue this to March 6th, which is our next meeting by a vote of the board. And then between that time and then we'll confer, as we have done in the past, give us alternative dates for March. It's George's birthday today, so.
Today was my birthday and you picked a wedding party.
Oh, no, you have a birthday.
We, we did that on purpose.
Can we make a formal motion to continue?
Yeah, uh, motion to adjourn?
You're not a formal motion to vote.
Motion to what?
Move it to March 6th.
Yeah.
A vote.
Okay, we have to vote. Move to March 6th.
Continue this matter to March 6th. Everyone?
Raise your hand, David.
Motion made by Lacy, seconded by, uh, yeah, to March 2nd. March 6th?
March 6th.